Good afternoon, welcome to City Council meeting for August 23rd, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined. And any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I will call the meeting to order. And Madam Deputy City Clerk, if we could have confirmation of the posting of the agenda and roll call?
Mayor, this meeting has been posted in accordance with Nevada Open Meeting Law. All members are present and you do have a quorum.
Thank you. We will begin with the invocation from Pastor Jason King.
Thank you for the invitation, it's an honor. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you, God, for your goodness and kindness to us, and we are especially thankful for this city and for this community. And God, I thank you for the leaders that you have given to this town. Lord, I pray that you would help them to be wise and humble, to do good and hard work for the people who live in this city, that you would bless this meeting tonight with peace and decorum and productivity, God. We come before you and we say thank you as the maker of heaven and earth, that you have blessed us with this city. And God, we ask for your blessing on the meeting, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Pastor. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
And Madam Deputy City Clerk, were there any public announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. We will have our initial public comment period then. Comments from people present at the meeting will be addressed initially. Anyone wishing to call in after those people have been given an opportunity to speak may do so. And we will also accept any emails sent prior to the meeting for public comment. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak? Ms. DeShane, please come forward and state your name.
Judy DeShane, do you want us to sign on this too?
Yes, please.
I'll do it at the end. Item 7, I know it's on the consent agenda, so it won't be heard, but out of curiosity, I would like to know what the improvements are that are being proposed for Buchanan and Veterans Memorial Parkway. I just, I know there was discussion prior, I mean quite some time back about a traffic circle, and I'm just wondering if that's still part of it? If somebody could get back to me at some point, I'd appreciate it. And then, item 11, the bonding being allocated for that senior living, I think that would be a good thing for us to do, because I'm sure there are, and there's probably many older people that if they had a nice apartment complex to go to, all on one level and whatever, they maybe would be willing to, interested in selling their homes and moving to something like that. So I think that's a good thing for us to do, is to go ahead and promote that. And then, the, let's see. The one on the swimming, on the water. I'm all in favor of saving as much water as we can, prior to there even being where they paid you to get rid of the lawn. We put in desert, front and backyard both, we put in drip irrigation, everything the way it was supposed to be, and nobody had to reimburse us. It was just the right thing to do way back when. And that was eight, nine years ago, and we felt that way, and my opinion hasn't changed. But the, in Phoenix, we had a big lot on a corner, and the house came with a swimming pool, which we had. It was about thirty, 300 square feet. And in the summer, at that, in a week's time, we would have to add five to 10 inches of water, just because that much would evaporate with 300 square feet. So the 600 square feet evaporation is going to double. The weather here is comparable to Phoenix in every way. So I would like to see the swimming pool max be at 300 square feet. I think it would be beneficial for water conservation. And our pool, at 300 square feet, we had no problem. At times, we'd have 12 to 15 people over and everybody's in the pool, and there was plenty of room. And that was people jumping off the diving board and everything else, because it was a deep pool. But, so I think 300 square feet would be fine on that. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And I was assured that the improvements at Adams and Veterans are not a traffic rotary, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in for public comment. The phone number 702-589-9629. Again, public comment in the initial period is for those items included in the agenda. Each speaker will have up to five minutes, and as always, we ask you to be civil and concise. Anyone wishing to call for the initial public comment period? And Madam Deputy City Clerk, you had indicated there were no emails for the initial public comment period?
No emails, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will close the initial public comment period then, and move to approval of the regular agenda. Madam Deputy City Clerk, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes to the regular agenda.
Thank you. Council members, any changes on the regular agenda being requested?
No changes.
No changes.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to make a motion then for approval of the regular agenda?
I move for approval for the regular agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda, again, Madam Deputy City Clerk, any changes on the consent agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I'm requesting removal of item number five from the consent agenda, and that will be brought back at the next meeting.
Thank you. Council members, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
Changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion with removal of item number five is requested by the City Manager?
I move to pass the consent agenda with the removal of item number five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that will bring us then to the first regular agenda item, number 11. Mr. City Manager, did you want to introduce this item?
Sure, so our Community Development Director, Michael Mays, will start us off with the private activity bond volume cap, related activities, and we'll have a presentation and hear from Robin Keller, the Vice President of Workforce Housing for Volunteers of America, or VOA for short.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor McManus and members of the City Council. So each year, Boulder City receives a volume cap from the state. These are economic development tools to help encourage reinvestment, principally with industrial reinvestment within communities. If the city does not utilize those funds by September 1st of each year, it is automatically given back to the state to use for those types of efforts. The city does have the option to reallocate those funds for affordable housing initiatives throughout the state. And so for many years, Boulder City has allocated those funds to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority to utilize for statewide affordable housing programs. This year, Volunteers of America reached out to the city and inquired about the opportunity to request those funds to use for a local project. The Homestead Assisted Living Facility that they own is going to be closed down for that type of purpose. They're proposing a 70-unit affordable senior housing apartment complex. So tonight, as City Manager noted, a representative from Volunteers of America, Robin Keller, will be on the phone to give you a presentation about their proposed project in Boulder City and what these funds would be used for. And you have a for you resolution 7507 for the opportunity to allocate those funds to the Nevada Housing Division specifically for this project. And so with that, we can get Robin on the phone to provide the presentation and answer questions.
Is this Robin?
It is.
Robin Clare did not answer.
Well, I am so sorry, but thanks for trying. We'll go without her.
All right, and we're ready for your presentation.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Mays, for keying up the presentation and giving background on our request. I am with Volunteers of America, our national headquarters is in Virginia, and we were founded in 1896. What you see in front of you is a picture of the homestead at Boulder City. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I turned off my voicemail on my computer. ...our request. I am with Volunteers of America. What you see in front of you is a picture of the homestead at Boulder City.
Now we can't hear you, Robin.
Okay. I stopped talking because it seemed like the presentation wasn't catching up, so I apologize.
Can you mute your background noise?
Okay. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize. I wanted to tell you a little bit about Volunteers of America. See, we were founded in 1896, and we're one of the largest nonprofits providers of affordable housing for both elderly, disabled people, veterans, and we are a major provider of skilled long-term nursing care and health services. We have been serving the community of Boulder City for more than 25 years, and I've been with Volunteers of America, I'm in my 30th year, so I actually was involved in the development of the homestead at Boulder City, as well as our facility next door, which is called Quail Ridge, it's 60 units of affordable housing for seniors. And when we opened this facility, the one we're talking about tonight, we opened it in 1999, and it was 60 units of assisted living, a one-story, absolutely gorgeous building. We have tons of services there, had, next slide, please. And while that's teeing up, I will tell you, basically, originally, the project was tremendously successful. In fact, it was so successful that we built a wing on, but in the meantime, another facility did open in town, and there just did not seem to be the market for both of us. We continued to operate, but at a low occupancy, and the project just was not able to financially sustain, thank you, financially sustain what we were trying to do. And basically, between the facility and trying to keep it alive for many years, I'm going to say four, maybe five years, Volunteers of America put about 60,000 a month of our own funds into this facility to try to keep it going, but it just, what, did not work. So what we've decided to do is to, we have given back the licensing for the assisted living facility to the state, and looked at various things that we could do with this property, but our main goal was to repurpose it as affordable senior housing. We've done market studies, and there's certainly a heavy demand in Boulder City. The facility that we're proposing, next slide, please.
It's advancing immediately, there's just a 30 second delay.
Oh, okay. I didn't know. My notation said let you know when it was to be announced, so I apologize.
No problem.
Okay, I'll just keep talking then. When we rehab the facility, it's going to certainly be energy efficient. We're going to replace the HVAC and the appliances and flooring and cabinets and common area, you know, generally the things that you do when you rehab a facility, I'm sure most of you are familiar with it. And as Mr. Mays said, what we're requesting is that the city of Boulder provide us or allocate to us their tax-exempt bond, so that we can build the facility with a bond allocation. And basically, we will apply for those bonds, and what happens is if the city supports the project and commits to the project, and there's not a sufficient allocation to fund what we need, then the state will make up the difference, as long as the city also supports the facility. So the project, we've also applied for home funds, there will be deferred developer's fee and seller financing, and we came today to ask for endorsement letter for the city and your approval for the bond issuance. Now, our presentation has, I don't know, about probably 20 pictures of what the actual campus is going to look like in the building. I don't have an architect on the line with me to answer any technical questions, if you have any, about the design itself, but certainly everything will be presented to the Planning Department and the city for review. So I am here if you have any questions, and I apologize if my presentation seems not smooth. You guys make me nervous, sorry about that.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. I know that, you know, we've been talking about this for some time, and it was sort of coincidental that the fact that the bonding for this type of project was being requested also by the Nevada Rural Housing Authority at the same time you were contemplating making this change. Being able to put these funds together and used here in Boulder City, I think, is an excellent opportunity for the city. You know, I don't know that people understand the difference between an assisted living facility and senior housing. Could you give us a little bit of information about the difference between those two types of occupancies?
Oh, absolutely. And I will also tell you that we operate 22,000 units of housing. And I'm, well, I'm sorry, my picture shows that the mayor was still talking, so I didn't know if you could hear me.
Yeah, there's a delay between what you see and what's happening.
Okay, I'm just going to shut down my computer.
You may just want to turn away from it for a few minutes here.
Okay, all right, well, with assisted living, it's a, basically, it's folks who can live independently but need very heavy services. Services like nursing care, we had a dementia wing there where there's 24/7 care needed, we had a dining room, beauty shop, pretty much a contained community, and we built it next to the hospital as they were partners with us in this. Now, an affordable housing complex in this context will be designed for people that meet 50% to 60% of the area median income. The property next door, Quail Ridge, is very low income and has subsidies, so those folks are paying 30%, but everybody's pretty much able to live independently. There won't be nurses on staff, and we will not be operating the kitchen and providing housekeeping and those kinds of things. It'll be certainly more independent living than what you see in an assisted living facility.
Thank you. And again, the reason I would like that clarification is, you know, you found that there, as you had mentioned, there was another facility that opened that also provides the assisted living services, and there just simply weren't enough people to be able to fund both of those properties, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'll just add a comment that, as was said, I think it is great to see this money being used here in Boulder City. I know, as it's been used before, it's not that Boulder City hasn't seen some benefit, but this is, all will be here in Boulder City, so I think that's great. And it addresses a need that I know is very needed right now, which is affordable housing, especially for those on low and fixed incomes like our senior citizens here. So I think that this is absolutely something that is not just appropriate, but well-desired here in this, in this community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I have to agree that this is wonderful. I know that there's a need in this community for affordable housing, people talk about affordable housing, and here's an opportunity to take an existing structure and modify it, and then, and turn it into something we definitely need. I understand that, I'm not sure I'm accurate, but about a two-year waiting list to get into Quail Ridge. And I, and I didn't know, but I understand now that Quail Ridge is, meets the needs of a lower-income community than this will. Now, will this be also paid for as a percentage of social security? You said 50% to 60% of median income.
Well, the people who live here, they, this facility will be for people 55 and older.
Okay.
So a lot of those folks are still working.
Oh.
Just in order to live there, your income has to be within the 50%, you know, lower than 60% of the area median income, or 50, and that changes annually. There is not a subsidy, subsidy. For example, at Quail Ridge, you're going to pay 30% of your income, and then the government will pick up the rest of that. But in this facility, there will be a set rent that you'll have to pay, and there is no subsidy attached to that, unless by some chance the housing authority would grant, or some vouchers. I talked with them a couple of years ago, I know that they have different leadership now, but they were not interested in providing any sort of subsidy unless they were also part owners. But I'm not sure, that may change, you know, with the new leadership. But in any case, the residents will pay a set rent, and that's set by the state. They're the ones that determine the amount of the maximum rent that can be charged.
Okay, would that be, what, fair market, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, that, I'm glad you cleared that up for me. I wasn't sure how it differentiated from Quail Ridge. And when it said board approval for bond issuance by the city, that this is not Boulder City being responsible for a bond, this is just the transference of a cap, a total of a cap for borrowing.
That is correct.
To them, but they are liable for the repayment of that bond, and we do not have a liability for that bond.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that we are, what we are transferring is a cap. Thank you. That's it, thank you for your answers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, again, Ms. Keller, I appreciate very much, you know, this funding is something that the council decides annually. Again, so happy to see that this come together, because normally, we're transferring this bonding capacity for use elsewhere in Nevada, which, you know, is a good cause as well, but it's good to see a project here that we're able to put this bonding capacity to work for. With that, I will move for approval of resolution 7507.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Again, thank you, Ms. Keller, and good luck with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone there in attendance, especially the council members, and thank you, Mr. Mays.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item number 12. Mr. City Manager, would you like to introduce this item as well?
Sure. Tonight, we'll be hearing the Police Department's annual report, and I believe Chief Shea will be kicking, kicking this off, but he's brought his whole team, and looks like we're in store for a good show.
Well, it's not the whole team, but... Well, it's not the whole team, but I hope you brought snacks.
No, I decided to do something a little different this year. We do have a management team we finally able to put into place, and I thought it was really important that you all have a chance to hear from them and what they believe their accomplishments in their areas are and what they're proud of. And if they're better looking than I am, they're more articulate, and they won't talk as long, right? So this is a schematic of what we look like now and how we're set up, so you can see that we have mid-manager now over each section of our department, whether it be administrative section, the operational section, which is patrol and detectives, animal control, trap, then we have the administrative lieutenant who has all those boxes and he's got stuff heaped all over him, and then our support services manager, who is responsible for all of our records, evidence, dispatch, things such as that. And then Aaron, who sits under me, who's actually responsible for all that stuff. And this is where the, this is a pretty typical layout for a department our size. This is a layout of the crimes that have occurred under UCR, the Uniform Crime Reporting, and it goes back to 2002. If you notice, in 2021, that's the current year, there's a little bit of differences. And the reason is, we've switched over to IVR, Incident-Based Reporting, right? The problem with Incident-Based Reporting and UCR is they don't really match up. IVR was created to fill all the gaps that UCR had. UCR was created by Department of Justice in the 30s. So, but to make this work, I decided what I would do is take the IVR data as best I could and formulate it into what would be a comparable use there on those areas I could. The IVR captures more data and things that before did not get classified this way. So for example, one of our adjacent cities has a 90% increase in robberies because crimes that weren't listed as a robbery in the past under IVR are now listed as a robbery. It doesn't mean somebody walked up and stuck a gun in somebody's face. It meets the definition of the IVR for robbery, which could be taking property from the direct control of another, which means I'm standing here, there's a cash register there, you reach over and grab some cash or run off, or you grab, my purse is sitting on the counter and you grab it away from me or something like that. IVR data does not translate to state law because what's a burglary in one state isn't a burglary in another. And what may be a robbery in one state may not necessarily be in it. So IVR is designed to capture all of this. So simple assaults were not captured under UCR, but they are under IVR. And the kidnapping abduction includes a lot of things that, it's not like some poor kid in his front yarding got taken off the street, or that you're, someone would walk into the store and somebody grabbed him or something like this. This can be things like a, where you're, keeps somebody in the house against their will. They want to leave, you're having a domestic, and you want to go, and you want to leave, and you're not. Or we have a custodial parent who refuses to return somebody after a visitation or something such as that. They get captured in some of this data. Didn't, didn't, it's not that it didn't occur before, it wasn't captured before under UCR. So all the agencies that are using IVR, and right now, it's not going as Department of Justice had planned, I think there's roughly 4,000 total agencies in the country that have gone to IVR. There's 12,900 police departments and 3,000 sheriff's offices. So I think we're one of the few agencies in Nevada that have switched over completely to IVR. We were one of the experiments.
Right, correct.
This is, I, the UCR IVR stats are only a piece of what the police do. Most of what we do is not captured by those data, that data. So we have quite a number of event codes, different event codes, well over 100 and some on event codes. And what I do is I take out some of the more interesting ones I think people might be interested in, some I have to lump together. But you can see, when you figure that, all of these things took place in the place of 52 weeks. So this is the things that happened over 52 weeks. So in 52 weeks, did 40 death investigations. In 52 weeks, we did 1,200 COVID business compliance checks till it stopped. We did another 1,400 business checks. We went out maybe in the middle of the night and did business checks. You know, we helped other agencies 746 times in 52 weeks. So we made 444 arrests in 52 weeks. So this is for 2021. Since we're halfway through the year, oh, by the way, the blue means it dropped from the year before. The red means it went up from the year before. And black was, I added it on there for the first time that year. This is the first half of this year. And you can see, some areas are going down and some are going up. And as COVID ends and certain things start happening again and picking back up, we're going to see some of these things going up and up and up. So this is not unusual. It's what's going on around everywhere. I just left LACC meeting, and property crimes are up, like I say, in adjacent city, 34% for burglaries are up 34% so far this year. As you can see by us, we're nowhere near anything like that. The numbers are deceptive percentage-wise. If you have 10 of something, and the next year you have 15, the percentage rise is huge. Where if you have 1,000 and you have an increase of 20, the percentage is very, very small. So that's where percentages become really difficult. You really want to look at the raw numbers. And when it comes to some crimes, one person can create a string. I've picked people up that have been responsible for 50 or 60 residential burglaries. So that's not too unusual either. Under animal control, things were down a little bit in 21. Again, COVID impacted us, but we still had in 52 weeks. This is what occurred. We had 538 animals come through, we got over 300 back to their owners. The important number is, we still had 4% of the animals that had to be euthanized. That qualifies us as a no-kill shelter. 90% save rate qualifies as a no-kill, and we're at 96%. I also threw in the wild animal things here because we do go out and deal with wild animals occasionally. I know folks are interested in dog bites, and these are the dog bite cases. We did 13 dog bite cases last year. And this chart just kind of shows where we are. If you had 100,000 people, this is where we would fall with us, the state, and national. We're way below the national, we're about 60% of the national average, so we're still pretty low. And a national average takes in people much, much smaller than us and much, much bigger. Tom Healy, he is our operations lieutenant. He's responsible for virtually everything out in the field with the exception of a couple of things. Hit this button and they'll bring up the.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney, Madam Deputy City Clerk, thank you.
I think you got them all right.
I'm sorry?
I believe you got them all right.
That's the hardest part of the night for me. Forgive me, I'm going to read from a prepared statement. The chief was gracious enough to give us about three minutes, so you're going to get 10 minutes worth of stuff in 10 minutes. My name is Thomas Healy. I'm currently assigned as the Operations Lieutenant with the Boulder City Police. The Operations Division consists of several different bureaus, sections, and units. As you can see, patrol operations, the detective bureau, which consists of general assignment detectives and a directed patrol unit, the training unit, the testing unit, and the hiring unit. We also handle background investigations, and finally, animal control is under my purview, but the chief already spoke about animal control. I'll start with the Patrol Operations Bureau. It consists of four patrol squads, of four officers and one sergeant. Each squad works 12-hour shifts. The graveyard patrol squads have been working with minimum staffing throughout the last year, and that's due in part to COVID sick illnesses, due to related injuries and attrition and staff vacancies. Even though they're often shorthanded, the patrol division continues to meet the demands of call volume. Several recent requests for assistance out of jurisdiction at high-profile incidents, including an explosion at Armor Rock, an airplane crash at the base of the McCullough Mountains, and the explosion and fire at the Hoover Dam. The patrol division's response to these incidents 24/7, fully staffed or otherwise, reflects the dedication of our officers to this community and the dangers they face and the sacrifices they make every day for the safety and the security of the citizens of Boulder City. With recent high-profile incidents at schools, parades, and other venues nationally, the patrol division stepped up and made sure that students' first day back at school is a safe one. It was all hands on deck at all schools, in the school zones and on campuses citywide. The patrol officers and supervisors of our department want the students, parents, and school staff to know that they support you and are there to protect you, provide a visible deterrent, and intervene if and when necessary. The July 4th holiday parade was a success as well this summer. It was all hands on deck again for our personnel to ensure that traffic flowed smoothly, people were safe, and we did our best to quell the illegal fireworks. This was possibly the most efficient July 4th the Operations Division has had in probably a decade. Traffic was really smooth this year. I'll move on to the Directed Patrol Unit. The Directed Patrol Unit is a three, a three-person team consisting of one detective and two officers, and it falls under the Detective Bureau. This team primarily focuses on proactive enforcement, concentrating on longer-term, more complex investigations. The Directed Patrol Unit has solved several recent criminal cases that are trending throughout the Las Vegas Valley, including a catalytic converter theft ring, which they were able to track back to North Las Vegas where the main suspect was arrested, residential construction site burglary where approximately $10,000 worth of damage was done by the suspects who were stealing copper from homes that were under construction. This burglary series was perpetrated by a Boulder City local, and our investigators were able to identify and take that person into custody. They also solved a series of burglaries at St. Jude's Ranch for Kids, which also tied into a commercial burglary in White Hills, Arizona. Our detectives were able to network with the investigators in White Hills and were able to take that suspect into custody. He was also a local. The Directed Patrol Unit. Lastly, they solved a major phone scam investigation targeting senior citizens here in town. One victim was bilked out of approximately $100,000. The investigation resulted in a seizure of approximately $48,000 of ill-gotten gains, and we anticipate being able to reimburse the victim several thousand dollars from that seizure. Then I'll move on to the Detective Bureau, the Investigations Unit. They consist of three full-time detectives and one sergeant. Recently, our Investigations Bureau solved an embezzlement case, I'm sure you've all read about it in the paper, whereby the suspect embezzled approximately $500,000 from an employee in Henderson and may have stolen even more money from a more recent employer in Las That case is still under investigation. The Detective Bureau is continuing to investigate a robbery that occurred in October of 2021, and we are actively pursuing investigative leads in that case. Since that robbery contributed to the death of the victim, it's being treated as a homicide investigation. In addition to investigating crimes, the detectives also handle intensive and thorough background investigations that potential employees must go through. These investigations delve deep into each candidate's personal history and generally take three to five months to complete. We do, we do this to ensure we hire the, excuse me, everyone we hire possesses the requisite moral character, psychological stability, and judgment expected of every Boulder City police officer. At this time, we've completed approximately 12 to 15 of these investigations this year. Moving on to the Training Unit. The Police Department's Training Unit consists of one full-time officer and is overseen by the Detective Sergeant. Recently, we conducted a department-wide active assailant training with the Henderson Police Department to prepare our officers for active shooter events at a school or other target with a high-threat potential. Boulder City's newest officer is currently attending this academy, and we expect him to graduate this October. Excuse me, the academy, and we expect him to graduate this October. We anticipate that our newest officer will be ready to work solo-certified patrol by February of 2023. Several weeks ago, we wrapped up a successful training package with the Boulder City Fire Department where we rehearsed Mass Casualty Incident Response, Incident Command, Rescue Task Force, and Multi-Assault Counter-Terror Action Capability, also known as MACTAC Active Shooter Training. MACTAC was developed by Las Vegas Metro Police Department after the Route 91 Harvest Fest shooting on October 1, 2017, after which every law enforcement agency in Southern Nevada pledged to standardize training and the response to these events, with the goal being that any officer from any agency would be able to fill in on a response team and address a threat. Additional police and fire training is scheduled for later this year, which will be scaled up, it'll be a scaled-up version and will include outside agencies and assets from numerous disciplines in the public safety sphere. Moving on to recruiting, the recruiting section is a completely collateral duty for approximately seven to 10 officers and sergeants. The department is ramping up all efforts to recruit several new officers for expected vacancies. This month, we hired another lateral officer from the Nye County Sheriff's Office who comes to us with nearly 20 years of experience in law enforcement. We've also been working hand-in-hand with the city's Public Information Officer, Lisa LaPlante, on creating additional recruiting videos featuring a few of our newly hired officers. These videos were completed and posted to the city's and the department's respective social media accounts, and the dark, the department would like to give a special thanks to Ms. LaPlante and her staff for the production quality and the speed of the production of those videos. National Night Out is currently in the planning stages. Once again, yay. We anticipate this is probably going to be the most attended National Night Out since we've started doing the event. National Night Out is, it's an annual community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships, neighborhood camaraderie to make neighborhoods safer, more caring partnership, excuse me, places to live. The planning team is coordinating with numerous vendors, agencies, participants, volunteers, employees, and others to ensure we provide the ultimate experience for those, for all those who attend. This will be the first National Night Out in two years since the COVID-19 pandemic began, and our goal is to reintroduce the police-fire softball game that everybody loves. Some of the attractions will include a canine demonstration, a Mercy Air helicopter, law enforcement representation from other local, state, and federal agencies. There will be food trucks on-site, and games and giveaways will be available. Forgive the shameless plug, but we're on TV. Lastly, we'll be holding three Know Your Limit campaign events in the city over the next month or so. The Know Your Limit campaign was designed to provide an educational opportunity within the Boulder City community to encourage groups to designate a sober driver and make good choices. Officers set up a booth in the downtown area with the goal being to inform bar and restaurant patrons about drinking and driving and educating them on how easily and quickly they can become Citizens are then offered an opportunity to guess their alcohol level and, using a preliminary breath-testing device, see their exact breath alcohol content. The campaign's mission is to encourage responsible drinking, as impaired drivers oftentimes believe they are under the legal limit when in fact they are not. All patrons volunteer to participate, and prizes and rideshare coupons will be handed out during the event. The first event was held in Boulder City on October 29th, 2021, and was a huge success. The second event will be held on August 27th. The following event will be on September 3rd for Labor Day. And the fourth event this year will be on September 10th. We hope it coincides with the Chamber of Commerce Wine Walk. Sorry if that was boring. I'm finished, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions for Lieutenant Healy?
I didn't make it work. Okay, thanks, Chief. Mayor, council, city staff, it's my pleasure to be here tonight, and I have a chance to address you guys and, and bring you, bring, I bring you up to speed on some of the things that we've been going on at the Police Department, and it's actually really good stuff. So the first thing is, I wanted, I'm happy to report that we've actually completed a capital improvement project. It was for the microwave from the city, for the PD up to Red Mountain. So a little bit of background on this. The Boulder City Public Safety utilizes the Southern Nevada Area Communications Council SNAP 800 megahertz radio system. This is a shared system with other governments in Southern Nevada. This is a very robust and radio, radio system that provides users with radio service extending beyond Clark County. So for this to work for our dispatchers, they sit in front of the console, that data and that voice that they, they transmit to get the public safety people wherever they need to go, it travels via a microwave from the PD up to Red Mountain. The reason it was replaced, it was over 20 years old and it was starting to fail. It was also no longer being supported by the people who manufactured it. Parts were becoming harder to find, not a very good place for public safety to be. So the Harris constellation was no longer supported. We moved to an Aviat eclipse. It should be another 20 years of life for that before it would need to be looked at again. This also helps with the SNAP project that was coming up next year, where they're going to be moving away from the T1s to Ethernet as a connection, and that would be the industry standard. So that will carry us into the next 20 years, and that'll provide great, great contact for, it will provide great support for the Police Department to get, you know, their people out and stuff like that, so. The other thing is, is that the first responders for Boulder City, we use three sites for, when we talk on our radios. Red Mountain, Simulcast, West Hank, Hoover, and they, and these sites are backed up now by generators. So before, they didn't have generators, so if we would have lost power, we could have lost those sites. So now that we have redundancy in the system, it makes it safer for everybody in the city. by generators. So before, they didn't have generators, so if we would've lost power, we could've lost those sites. So now that we have redundancy in the system, it makes it safer for everybody in the city. Security projects, um, new card readers from HID, Signo, uh, they're a Signo reader with Seos, uh, card technology, which provides the highest level of encryption available. This is the industry standard, and we will be moving to that. We placed that order back in, I believe it was March, and we are expected to receive that, uh, in December, and that's due to the COVID-19 backlog of stuff, and, uh, so we're, we're hopeful, hopeful that it will come in soon, so we can get that stuff installed. When it is, uh, when it does arrive, it will take about two weeks to install that throughout the entire city and all the, uh, all the buildings and stuff, so you, everybody will be receiving a new card for access control. Mobile security cameras. So we, we recently purchased, uh, Mobile Pro Systems, uh, one camera trailer and three pole cameras. These, uh, these have recently helped with damage to the city parks. As you know, Director Hall has been reporting a lot of damage. We recently placed the trailer out in one of the parks. The damage stopped immediately. There's also one posted right out here outside the back of City Hall. The damage in that restroom also stopped immediately once it was placed. Camera plan for City Hall and the PD complex along with record, uh, Parks and Recreation has been developed. It'll be foregoing to, I believe, Projects Committee Chief, uh, and it'll be discussed there, and if everybody's in agreement that it'll meet the needs of the city, they'll be ready to move forward with placing cameras around this area for safety and security of staff. One of the other things we looked at was the physical lock assessment with Public Works to update our, uh, mechanical keys and locks. There's a, there's a number of locks and keys that we're using. None of it seems to kind of, it's all mixed together, and it doesn't seem to make much sense. There's a lot of, uh, concern about key control and, uh, and who may have left the city and if they took keys with them and stuff, so we're looking at updating that as well as part of the, the security updates. Department vehicles. So we, we were concerned that Ford Motor Company was not going to open up their order banks for us. In fact, we were told that there was a good possibility they weren't going to order, uh, open up this year at all. Fortunately, they did open them up. We did recently place the order for the eight vehicles that were allotted. One was a replacement vehicle for the accident that occurred where the officer was almost killed out there on the I-11 when the guy slammed into the back of the car. So the eight Ford PISUVs are going to cost us roughly about $50,000 just for the vehicle itself, not counting the outfitting and the, and the equipment that needs to go into them. That's about an $8,000 increase over last year. Outfitting that will be, the labor has also gone up, the cost of the equipment has gone up, another $3,000 from what we installed in the cars last year. We are going to do everything we can to salvage any type of equipment we can out of these vehicles and try to save money where we can, if it makes sense and it's safe to do so. Electric vehicles, and I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, um, uh, the first Tesla was delivered last week on Thursday, and with a little bit of luck, we should have it, uh, mostly outfitted by tomorrow. We're moving pretty quick with this. We're going to have, uh, the decals put on it, and we will have the lights installed in it, and we should have it ready for show here very, very shortly. Uh, I'd like to point out, uh, the difference between them and Ford. We also, uh, besides purchasing Teslas, we purchased a Ford Mach-E GT. That vehicle, we were, we were lucky to get on that order because it was originally ordered by someone else back in February of, of this year, and they canceled. So we, we purchased this vehicle about a month ago. It still has not been delivered, and in the process, it looks like we're going to have maybe two or three Teslas by the time they deliver just one Ford that we got to jump on. People are going to ask, why did you go with a Tesla over a Ford? I'd like to point out that these Teslas were actually, even the more expensive of the, of the Teslas, were actually $6,000 cheaper than the Ford. So there is a cost savings with the Teslas. The other, the last thing I'd like to talk to you about is the Boulder City Conservation Easement. Since the inception of this contract that we've worked out with the county, the city has placed a full-time officer out there in the desert. That, over time, that has not made a lot of sense, because if the officer wasn't available, if they were on vacation or whatever, we would have to backfill that position with another officer. Luckily, the chief, uh, had a, had a plan to, um, do a marshal program where we can hire part-time retired folks that were qualified officers to go out there and work at a savings for not only the county who pays that contract, but also for the city, because if they're not available, then we can fill it with another, a part-time employee. The county is very happy with this program. It's been very successful up to date. This started about the beginning of the year. There's a lot of flexibility with scheduling, and it seems to have worked out for both sides. They, in fact, they were so happy, we just recently renewed the contract. Last, the, the other thing you might see is, is because of the contract, we actually purchased a brand-new 22 Gladiator for Desert Patrol. That is purchased by the county, and it's no cost to the city, so. And that is, uh, I was trying to be brief, because I was told brevity, and that's not necessarily my strong point, so I could talk about some of this stuff for quite some time. A lot of it's pretty intricate. So, um, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those for you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Um, regarding the, the pricing of the, the vehicles, um, a traditional vehicle versus the pricing for, uh, an electric vehicle, what are, what are the, what are the differences that we're talking about, and are we saving anything on the outfitting of the electric vehicles, or, you know, just, what are we looking at there?
So where the savings is going to come into place is, so there's a lot that, it's not just necessarily the cost of the vehicle. So for instance, by the time we're done outfitting, uh, the Fords, because the base price of the vehicle is $50,000 itself, not, and there's a lot of equipment that needs to go into that, that may not need to go into the, to the electric vehicles. The savings comes where we don't have oil changes. There's no, there's less service, it's not burning gas. The, we, sometimes if the car breaks down, we have to, we have to take that to the dealership, or we have to take it over to the city shops. Electric vehicles, at least for the Teslas, uh, most times, if there's anything wrong with them at all, and there's very little that really fails with these vehicles, it can be dealt with remotely by, by Tesla themselves. In other words, they can fix it while it sits in our back parking lot, saving us manpower from taking it down to the dealership. There is a slight increase in cost of the vehicle, but overall, and I think other departments across the country that have already went to this program, have seen significant savings over the first few years, and that's because of the gas savings and all the maintenance that goes along with it. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen?
I just had a question about the security poles that you, did you have those down at the, um, golf course?
Yes, so there is one there right now. There's, the camera trailer has been deployed there, because there has been some burglaries reported down there in the parking lot, and we were planning on putting some of the pole cameras up down there. We're just waiting for some electrical improvements to be done before we can place those.
Okay, I saw that down there, and I was wondering what it was, so great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
I, um, since we take our dog for a walk every night at Oasis Park, and I noticed that cute thing sitting in the middle of the park, A, was anybody caught doing anything? And B, is there a risk that now that it's gone, that whoever was doing whatever, was vandalizing the, I think it was the basketball court area, coming back? Is there follow-up? Is there going to be a permanent camera? Is there something that's going to be done to make sure that?
So again, we're waiting for some electrical improvements down there to place one of the pole cameras. Uh, I don't want to jinx us, but-
Oh, I know.
As of right now, no, they have not returned, and it seems to have put a stop to it right away. So no, we did not catch anyone, but it doesn't mean they didn't pass the camera, notice it, and then keep on moving.
But, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, we did notice there was a lot of activity, uh, in the park after hours, and we did ask for patrol to increase their presence down there.
Um, I noticed somebody get too close to one, to that machine. Does it have a really deep voice that says you have entered a secure area? That's a little intimidating.
It, it does, and that's to keep people away from that, and it will, will alert us if somebody's tampering with that.
I didn't know if somebody was actually watching and, and that was a live voice, or-
No, we, we keep a pretty close eye on it.
Maybe yes, maybe.
Yeah, ah, okay, I don't want to give away any traits.
A magician never reveals their secret, right?
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
You know, you covered information on the radios. Obviously, with Boulder City and encompassing over 200 square miles, um, are these improvements that are being made, or are they being tested as far as the reach within, uh, our city limits?
So, no radio system is comprehensive enough where it'll cover every nook and cranny. Uh, we have a very good radio system that it, it covers a lot of the area that we need. Um, and this particular, uh, item that we upgraded was necessary for the Police Department or the Dispatch Center to dispatch our first responders. So as long as that data is going out, it provides a direct connection to the core, which is down in Las Vegas, where, uh, they're able to transmit data that typically the officers don't need to transmit when they're talking on the radio. So yes, it is an improvement, because it, it's better, newer, better, and with the, moving from the T1 lines to the Ethernet with the industry standard, that will improve the signal as well.
Okay. Um, and you had also, uh, mentioned the, uh, this changeover to these vehicles, again, going back to the fact that we have these 200 square miles plus, um, you know, I, I know when this had been talked about previously, and you had brought in some vehicles to take a look at, um, there's probably going to remain a need for, uh, the fuel vehicles as well for some period of time, um, until the electric vehicles may show increased capacity. Uh, do you have any timetable right now on, uh, the changeover?
At this point, because we're in the testing phase of this, I really would hate to say, because I'm not really 100% sure. I do know, I can tell you, I personally own a Tesla. I've never had a problem with the range, and I know, working patrol myself, uh, the most I would ever drive in a night is maybe 130 miles, uh, and the Teslas are capable of going almost 300 miles in a, in an evening, so I don't see that being an issue. I do know that, I've been told that the Police Department is one of the biggest gas users in the city, so it would be nice to do our part to cut back on that and to try to save the city some money and, and maybe help our, uh, our earth as well, so.
All right, and, and of course, we have the mounted patrol as well, so the horses can be relied on.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Lieutenant.
I, uh, sometimes have to have a translator when Lieutenant Alboz talks about this technical stuff.
I was going to ask him to go back over all the acronyms, but we, we do, we do have a limit on our meeting time, I hope.
Yeah, I don't want to keep this going, but on the, uh, electric vehicles, we have two test programs we're putting together. One is from the management side, and the other's for the operator side, and we have a whole parameters of things you want to test. As for our radios, um, I've used our radios in Caliente and talked down to here, and no problem at all down in Laughlin. I had to go up to Caliente, so I, all the way up, I tested it all the way up. Worked just fine, as it's supposed to.
I don't have any little things come up. I don't have any little things come up.
Nope.
Well, you did them.
That's what you gave me.
Well, I know, I didn't do, I didn't do the little, anyway. Mayor, Council, Staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Um, on my divisions, I want to start with, I just noticed a spelling error, sorry. I'd like to start with my Communications Division. Our Communications is staffed by eight full-time dispatchers that service police, fire, and EMS. Um, we recently were able to upgrade two of those positions to lead positions to help with the day-to-day running of our communications center, because between non-emergency calls coming in, 911 calls coming in, staff in the, excuse me, citizens in the lobby, and utilities, public works, other things that come up, it sometimes can get a little crazy. So, um, with our staffing of eight and the help of the leads, it helps get, keep everybody on track with that. The things that we've done this past year, so we worked extensively with National Park Service. They've always been a really good neighbor with us, and this last year, we decided to test out using their communications center as a remote location in case of emergency and we might have to leave our facility. So we set up a test location and basically just up and moved everything there and operated there for two days, and everything went very smooth, and it was a really good experience for us in being able to know that if we did have something happen in our current center that we had to evacuate immediately, we would have somewhere that we could go and set up. During that time, we also had built a portable PSAP or a portable 911 system, and basically what this is, is a case that if something happened and we had to leave, we'd literally pick it up, go to wherever we're going to go, under five minutes, have it set up, and be able to start receiving 911 calls again. And we don't have to be hardwired, hooked into anything, so we literally can hook up anywhere in the mobile command center, or if we went back down to the National Park Service while waiting for them to get phones and stuff hooked up, we could immediately start taking our calls and be active and working again. So that was a really big deal for us. Sorry, want to catch up to where we're at. And our last project that we're kind of currently working on now is, we're researching and have plans to implement a alarming system for fire department, and working with them to try to increase their response times and being able to respond to different areas of the city. With this system, it would vocalize to the fire department in real time as the dispatcher's typing the information into the computer. So they would be getting the live updates of this is what's going on without the dispatcher having to stop and page out, go back to the caller, get more information, update them. They'd get it all live time to cut that much down on their response times. So right now, we're just currently looking at different companies that offer this service to find the best fit to be able to implement that. Um, moving on to my Records Division, this last year, we were able to fill a position that had been vacant for some time, so we have our staffing back up to, to law enforcement support technicians, and besides managing all the ins and outs, paperwork of the inner workings of the department and the citizens' requests, we were also able, with the two of them, to resume the, resume the DMV services for the public. So that was another big thing that we were excited to be able to offer again. With my Evidence Division, our agency was one of five in the state that back in 2018 were given a incinerator as part of the Governor's War on Drugs Program. The stipulation that went with that is that we would also help out our neighboring law enforcement agencies with their drug-burning needs. So we currently have agreements with seven other agencies, and we assist them in their drug-burning needs as they come in, which keeps us pretty busy with doing that. And also with our evidence, we are implementing a new evidence software program to help manage the evidence, and it will also help us with doing audits and keeping track of chain of custody and all of those that go with the Evidence Bureau. And my last division is probably the hardest-working one, because she has the hardest job, which is my Division Secretary, because she has to keep track of these guys and all of their needs and keep them on track and online, and she has an amazing job at that. So I'm just truly blessed to have really good staff that are hardworking and so dedicated to doing the best job they can for the public, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Perkins? It's not that far away from the microphone. This really isn't a question, but, you know, it's something that over the years that I've been on City Council has been a concern of mine, and I know it's been, uh, brought up by the Police Department, is the staffing for the dispatchers. Um, I know initially, there was one dispatcher, uh, oftentimes on duty. Um, that's not fair to that employee, in my view, but it's also a potential threat to the community. Uh, you know, that person should not be there left alone. Are you now able to have, uh, two in place?
We still don't. We have two a shift, but our minimum staffing is one. So if I have somebody that calls out sick or that is on vacation, then, um, we are down to one person, just again, because of the minimum staffing being one person, so I can't call in for overtime or bring anybody else in if I have one person there. And it is difficult- And it is difficult because usually when one person is on, that's when the airplane crashes hap, that's when the big fire, everything happens. And so they're dealing with multiple channels at once and trying to organize all this. And it's unfortunately a nationwide problem with dispatch centers is trying to keep staffing levels. I've been with the city for 23 years. When I started in dispatch, we had four people that covered the week. And you know, it was exhausting. We worked 12-hour shifts because then it was out of necessity. Now, it's out of necessity and out of, we're so used to those 12-hour shifts that it just accomplishes the work in a more timely manner.
Thank you. It's still concerning that we have that situation. You know, you mentioned that work has now been done. You have apparently a completely remote system that you can utilize. Also, you mentioned working with the park service at their dispatch center. Has it been looked into as far as cooperative agreements with either the park service or Clark County for some type of backup to what we currently have?
We do. We, we meet extensively with park service. They're our closest neighbor and they've always been, you know, very open and willing to help us with whatever our needs are. So we are currently in meetings with them. We met again with them this morning on possibilities of different things that we could work and do with them to help each other out and with numerous resources and stuff. So currently too, we always have for the past years, I have signed agreements with them. So like if something happens with our computer system and it's down and I have an officer on a traffic stop that needs something ran through a computer system, they run it for us and, and give us the information via telephone and stuff. So they've always been a really good partner for us and their close proximity makes it even easier.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Jorgensen?
DMV services are back up, so I will be being asked now what DMV services are available.
So we've never been allowed to do, as a remote office, we can't do anything with driver's licenses. So it's usually registrations, handicap placards, you know, trailer plates, things like that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
And Mayor, the rule of common public safety, 24 hours a day, seven days a week to get coverage, it's 5.6 people for any position you want filled. So if we want two positions filled 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it would take 12 people. We have eight.
And it's a concern.
It is. Amos. They don't remember who they are, but we do.
I remember.
So since we're on the topic of dispatching here, I just wanted to, if we all recall the power outage we had over the weekend, I just pulling up some notes here. I had Ruby pull these numbers for me, just, just to wonder what happened. So in a, in a six-minute period, our dispatchers answered 39 calls from the community about the power outage alone. They also had a rollover accident that happened in Arizona that they had to answer all those 911 calls for. So in that nine-minute period, they were extremely busy. So even with two people on dispatch center, so Mayor, your concerns are noted and yet they're heard emphatically from the membership of the police department. And it's something that we get to address later on this year as we talk about budgets and staffing and stuff like that. So I just want to take a minute to get that out while it was fresh in my mind. But thank you for having us, Mayor. Thank you for having us, council and staff. It was, it's great to be here. I get to wrap this little, this up, I think only because the chief felt sorry for me because I really don't have anything to say. They are the wonder behind this. And it is, I got to address the council a year ago, a year and a half ago, with an idea, with a concept that the chief and some of us came up with, and that's the idea of integrating lieutenants into our workforce. And I, I think what they have been able to demonstrate is that not only were they needed, but they, they are doing a fantastic job at capturing some of this stuff and some of the things that may have been going through the cracks, only because we didn't have the ability to lead our membership effectively and manage programs effectively, which we are beginning to demonstrate our ability to do. More importantly is that as our, we're being able to demonstrate the complexities of our organizations more and more and more, the consequence of that as we're identifying greater and greater needs, greater needs in technical support. This guy, this guy's up here talking about, I get to hear this every day from him and I, I'm bewildered to go, yes, yes, Vinnie, yes, yes, that's nice, Vinnie. Can you slow down just a little bit for me? Because I don't understand it and he's, and I'm just getting this, you know, this, this trial by fire from him. And I've approached our administrative officer and I've approached human resources, again under Bryce, and our finance team about our need for technical business partners, our HR business partners. And more importantly, what I'm just learning and getting integrated in is our financial business partner. So I've even reached out to finance and talked about these relationships that we can develop in the future as more of a support conduit between these departments so that the, the interaction and the communication is more effective and the interaction and communication is more realized because we have this partnership with our, our department, which is one of the largest in the city, that we have more computers in our department than any other department combined in the city. And we have that IT need, that we have specific human resource needs when we talk about the complexities of HR, not HR 218, the NRS 289, which deals with the police officer bill of rights and how we have to address our folks in the department statutorily. And then some of the training issues that we are now required by statute and those complexities that we're, we're able to identify through our training aspects and things like that. And then lastly, the complexities of our finance, of our financial needs with the department and how we're evolving those conversations down the road. So then then lastly, I want to talk about is recruitment, well, last bullet, I want to talk about one more thing while I have a minute. But our recruitment efforts, our recruitment efforts are needing to expand regionally. We can't just rely on Boulder City being a great place to work, a great place to live, a great place to come and visit. As we're pirating these other officers from Nye County, from NHP, that doesn't solve any, that doesn't solve, solve our regional problems. So we're now having to think about reaching out to Arizona, California, Utah, and, and drawing some of those, those folks down into us and making us more attractive. And we're talking, we're having those conversations right now. So we might have an entirely different recruitment makeup six months from now, but it's something that we're having to do because if we hired, if we hired someone today, you would see them on the street solo 12 months from now. That's reality for us. That's, that's, that's what, that's what it takes to get an officer on the street. And then lastly, I want to give a little plug right now for our, since we're talking about electric vehicles, we have them on deck September 15th at the Dam Roast House at 9:00 AM. I'm hoping to have those cars out front there so that the community can come out there and see them right in hand, ask any questions they want about them, where we're talking about them. And we'll have our, our program developed where they can, we can answer some of these questions about the cost savings that these, these vehicles have potential for us, the operational potentials for us, administrative potentials for us. But Vinnie drives a Tesla, he gives, he loves Tesla, but the reality is, we ordered Teslas three weeks ago. We got it two weeks after we ordered it. We are still looking at vehicles that, that we ordered a month ago. Banks for our explorers just opened up a couple of weeks ago. We won't see those until January. So hopefully, we see them in January. So those are some of the challenges that we're facing down the road. But come out on September 15th and we'd love to talk to anybody about it. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Questions for Commander Johnson, Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, thank you very much. I have a question. Tech support and business partners, in a perfect world, what does that look like to you?
So it's not necessarily, let's say, someone that kind of has an understanding for what, like let's say an HR business partner. It's someone that has an understanding of the needs of a police agency rather than what it needs for public works. Because they're two different animals. When there's, there's statutes that are required for, if I have a need to investigate the conduct of a police officer, there's certain steps I have to do by statute. Where if I'm looking at the conduct of someone from public works, they don't fall under those same statutory requirements. And to have an HR business partner that understands those guidelines makes it a little bit easier because it's me, it's Lieutenant Heeling and Hillary, who, who kind of worked those, which is our administrator, deals with those, those ins and outs. For finance, I, I try and meet with Angela and, and you know, we're, we're talking two different languages here. I'm not an accountant, I'm not a finance, I'm not a budget person. I'm just, you know, I, so I go to her for, for guidance, I talk to her back and forth. She is very, very patient with me because I do get a little bit heated because a lot of it isn't, I don't understand what's going on. And at the end of the day, she's, she's cleared it up, she's cleared up everything and, and we set up times to meet down the road. So those are the kind of the things that we're talking about. Not necessarily that we're adding employees to the police department, but to get Ben help as a technical help for the, for police department or for public safety in general, to get HR help to the police department so that we're dealing with this. Because we're, we are a large department and our, our agency is very complex because we deal with so many different things.
So you're talking about a liaison in each of those departments whose job it would be to become more educated on your particular needs and be able, for example, Ben?
Yes.
They call upon him and he would be able to, and, and know what it is that, that needs to be fixed or what, what the challenges are.
Yes, ma'am.
Or somebody, so you're not talking about either an outside business partner or bringing in more staff, just somebody in each department who's, in addition, would be responsible for knowing more about what your needs are.
Yes, someone, someone within the city that can do that, not only stands our needs, but also understands the culture of Boulder City. You know, to have, to hire a business partner from outside, don't, they don't necessarily understand the dynamics of Boulder City. And although we are a small community, we are a dynamic community. We, we have, we have a lot of people with, with, that have very, very involved in this community more than you would see in other communities. I, I, I look at the old Henderson Police Department, our closest sister agency, they talk about collaboratives with the community. We are collaborative with our community. We don't have to pronounce that. We are community policing. That is Boulder City. That's what we do. And we do it very, very well. But as our complexities of our organizations grow, we need those expertise that might not be present today that we, we do need down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a few questions. I'm not sure if they're for the commander or for Chief Gray. You know, kind of general things. So I'll let the, the chief decide who he wants to answer the questions. You know, when we, when you went over the statistics of the crimes that we have, you know, I believe in Clark County, the homicide rate has increased by something like 60% over the last four or five years.
You know, the sheriff just went over his data on Thursday and I believe homicides were down for the county, they were up slightly for North Las Vegas and they were down for Henderson. So it fluctuates all over. Then, you know, again, most homicides are committed between people that know each other, either through some sort of relationship. It's rare you have the stranger type of homicide. Those are very rare. So it goes along domestics, a lot of them are domestic related, great majority of them, family members that get angry, you know. But the latest data, nobody said, Aaron, pretty much, it just, it's all over. And the ability of the police to prevent a homicide, it's like trying to present domestic violence or not in your living room. So.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, obviously, that is probably the most concerning crime is when someone kills someone else. But you know, looking at the slide that you had for how we compare to others, total crimes, the violent crime or property crimes, in most cases, we are well under half the rate of other entities, whether it's the state of Nevada or nationally. I, one, I think that's indicative of the police force that we have, but also the citizenry that we have here.
Exactly. Exactly. It's a combination of many factors that result in that. It's a combination of your community, the makeup of your community. You know, I'll tell folks that cops per thousand means absolutely nothing. Take 10,000 people, put them in a small town in any state other than Kansas, because I just found out that's a mess. Put them in North Dakota and put 10,000 people in the middle of the Bronx. How many cops do they need? It bases on your community. And to me, the, you base your success as a law enforcement agency on the satisfaction of the citizens that live in the area you serve. If they're happy with the police department and what they have, then you're successful. If they're not, then you make those corrections that need to be made, as well as you can to, to reach that satisfaction goal. And I think we do a pretty good job there, certainly not perfect. But I can tell you that I've been around in this business a long time and I've worked every kind of area you can think of, from the poorest to the absolute richest. And I see the officers here, they're, they're as good as any I've ever worked with, they're as well-trained as any has ever been around. They put more care and effort into things than I've ever seen before. There are things that happen here and people that put casework in and spend time on things that I wouldn't have seen in the other places. They handle the call and you go to the next, you know, you, it's just, it's just, you go to the house, you handle it, you write your report and leave. Not here. Not here. It's a completely different environment. I'm very proud of the folks here and I brag all the time to the places I came from. You know, one of the things, I don't want to take too much time, this took longer than I thought, but as we're one of the largest and most complex departments that the city has and frequently the most misunderstood. But when we're talking about technical people, cops, we don't fix anything, we just break it. So the people that fix them and make them work aren't us. So as we get more and more technical things, it becomes very, very difficult for us to keep them running. We have more computers than the rest of the city combined. And when ours fail, part of our critical infrastructure is failing. So we can't afford to let that happen anymore. Now the computers are such an integral part of what we do, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's not like we shut down Thursday at 5:00. We don't. And when the things break on Friday, there's nobody but us. So that's the kind of things we're talking about. We have to move into the kind of way, laws apply to us differently. Fair Labor Standards Act, it's different for public safety. There are things that are different for us. And we don't understand all these, yet a mistake can be critical and can cost the city hundreds of thousands, if not million dollars. So we're just trying to get ahead of the curve on that.
Thank you. You know, a couple of the other things that have come up this evening and in the past, you know, the, the building that you're in was the original city hall here in Boulder City, the original library and actually part of it was the original police department. You know, one of the things that as a council, we're moving forward is a ballot question asking the voters for permission to build a new police station. I know a little bit of it was mentioned tonight about training. I know you've mentioned it in the past about having a space for training, finding space for training. Do you believe that would improve things for the department to have a new police station or put the money elsewhere?
Oh, absolutely. There comes a point where you can only make the old things work for so long. And we've really outgrown where we're at and we're, you know, I've got a lieutenant now working in a office space that was a storage closet under a stairway because there is no other place to put them. And not that we don't like them down there, but there is no place to put them. You know, we have things there that we really shouldn't have. We have open sewers, we, every time it rains, it floods. They got pictures of me with a mop, you know, on the second floor, not the basement, second floor, the floods. It's just that it's, it's really become antiquated and it's to the point where part of the renovations that were done 10, 12 years ago roughly, it looks like they were really never completed. And it's just, we've outgrown the facility and the times have passed it by. It was not designed for what it's being used for and we keep trying to make it work. But it, you know, we need to kind of keep up with the times a little bit. And I know that Lieutenant Alboz always talks that when he got here in 1995, the guys that were getting ready to retire were talking about the building that they were gonna build that had been promised since 1970. So is that about right? Yeah.
We're actually trying to get there this time.
Yeah, we're getting, I told you, into the 70s together. So that, I think, I don't know what happened to the... So I was just gonna, we have challenges coming up. All agencies, staffing is becoming very difficult. It's not just us, it's everywhere. Every police agency is suffering, trying to find people, trying to hire people, trying to retain people. My old agency, Seattle, when I worked there, was 1,500 officers. They're down to 940. Out of that, they probably have an effective 810 maybe out of that number. So our brother agencies here, the N... So our brother agencies here, the NHP is saying that they're really hurting for officers. There's several hundred vacancies at Metro. It's becoming very, very competitive. And one of the things we have to do is look at how we become competitive, because we are competing for people. And we don't have any kind of incentive programs or anything like that. Those are things we have to, we're going to have to develop. We have to, we've got to attract candidates. Henderson just tried to do a lateral entry program. They got one person. So it's not just us. Budget is, is becoming hard for all of us. Things have changed. The traditional way that governments budget and spend doesn't always work, and cars are a perfect example. Things have changed. We can no longer order things off a shelf. Frequently they're telling us they have to be manufactured. We hope we can get them to you in nine to 10 months. So as we go forward, we're going to look at budget things and how they impact us. We were fortunate with Ford. We were able to piggyback on an unexpected ability for Metro to buy vehicles. We piggybacked onto them, and we were lucky we found that. Equipment, a lot of it's getting antiquated, very hard to get. I say, the ability to, to buy things as we used in the past just doesn't exist anymore. And Vinnie's right, has procured most of our equipment. He frequently calls me on Saturdays when he is out traveling around on his own, looking for ways for us to procure things and find things. It's not unusual. Facilities, of course, I put up there because we have issues with the facility. And our biggest one is keeping current and up to date with an increasing, changing, more complex environment and ever-morphing expectations. The legislature heaped a lot of us, on us this last time around. We're still scrambling with some of it. A lot of it's going to go into effect in January. We have no idea what else the legislature's going to do in January to the session. All of them are unfunded mandates. None of them have been funded, yet they're mandatory on us that we have to do it. So that's going to be another challenge for us. So that's our presentation. Took a lot longer than I thought. I apologize for that, but I thought that it was worth letting you all see and know the folks to do, and let them understand all that we do. We do a lot more than just see the mark patrol car out there. There's a lot more going on. And remind people this is going on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, every day. There's never a day off. We never close. We never stop. We're the only city department that does arson fire. We, we're always here and always will be. And they've been here since 1960, and they will be here in 2160. I won't be, but they will be. Any questions for me or?
A couple of other things. You know, you mentioned staffing levels. You know, where are we at right now? Do we have openings or?
Yes, we do. We have one coming up. We have an officer leaving to go to a federal agency. We just gotten, reopened our banks back up to get applications for a lateral. We have a young lady who's going to start as an entry level. She'll enter into the academy in November. She'll graduate in the late spring, go into the field training program. She tested with us over a year ago. This is how long it takes to get somebody. Now, you roll the dice when you hire a new person. As they go to the academy, they may not survive that process. They then go to field training program, they may not survive that process. And so we start all over. But the pool of personnel is becoming smaller and smaller. I said on the post commission, we know we need to make some changes. The state makes it difficult to hire people from out of state in laterals. We've got to make some changes. Otherwise, we start feeding off each other, and that helps out nobody. So, yeah, we try to get ahead of it. There is a program called overstaffing, where you have a potential vacancy coming up, and you pre-hire people to put them into training at the recruit level, knowing somebody's going to be leaving in a certain date. The dice roll on that is the person may decide not to leave. And then we have to decide whether to let that person go or to do something else with that person. But there is a program called overstaffing. The difficulty with the academies is they're not as available as they used to be. There's just not as many of them. So right now, we're going to Henderson's Academy. So when they run one, we tag into that. CSN is no longer an option for us, so.
Yes, and I, I know, I just heard a news report that the Highway Patrol is at a third of their staffing level. So, you know, we've had those laterals from the Highway Patrol, from Nye County, you know, from other agencies. You know, that's great to get an experienced officer to come in, but you wonder how many of those are left out there and, you know...
I frequently sit next to the director, Tagliati, from the Nevada Department of Public Safety. We have little jokes back and forth as he asks me what I've done to him this week. So, yeah, it's a problem. And coming from an area where this was very prevalent, it made for bad feelings between agencies. And it started at administrative level, but was slide down to the officer level because Bob wanted vacation next week. Now he can't because Jim came over to our department. Or maybe Bob needed a backup unit. He didn't get it as quick because his partner who used to work that area now went to that agency over there. So it does make for some hurt feelings sometimes and some difficulties. But on the other hand, we've got to fill vacancies, and the people that are in those agencies are leaving for, not because they hate their agency, but because they're looking for a better life for their families. And that's why they move. It, that's 99% of the people. That's what we look for. We don't look for someone who's dissatisfied with where they're at, but is trying to make a better life for themselves and their families. That's the people we want.
And, you know, as far as the Highway Patrol goes, you know, the way I see it as well, that puts demands on our police department to patrol US 95, I-11, all of these places that would normally be the responsibility for Highway Patrol. They simply don't have the officers to put out there.
And a person in trouble doesn't care what color the shirt is of the guy who shows up.
Yeah. Or, or the person doing 120 and getting ready to cause serious injury to others. Couple of other things. You know, you had mentioned the animal shelter, the fact that it continues to qualify as a no-kill shelter. That has enabled the city to obtain grants, significant grants, to help run that facility. I know there's been some work being done out there as far as the lobby goes that might help with some of the issues they've had out there. It was mentioned before about the cameras that are now being installed in various areas. You know, it seems to me that we have voted to approve cameras, not necessarily for the police department, but cameras every year, and yet we never seem to get them going. So it's great to see that these are finally getting in place and doing what they were expected to do, which is to stop problems that are occurring out there.
You'll see cameras, there's some new ones we're testing up at Animal Control, and there's a fencing project that's starting up there to make it safer for the employees. And so they don't come in and find people in their back area. And that started, I believe it started today.
That's great. Yes, that, you know, this city went through a period with animal control where animals were being killed by the animal control officer before the owner or a potential adoptee had any opportunity to recover that animal. You know, I personally, and I think this community as a whole, probably feels some shame about what happened there, but also the fact that we don't want to see that repeated. We've gotten to a place with that no-kill status that I think a lot of people take pride in. So good to hear that there are things being done out there. You know, we've mentioned the training before. In addition to potentially asking the voters to approve the construction of a police station, was also a joint fire-police training facility, building. What's your view on the need for that and the location of it?
I think that's a great location for it, that we can share facilities with fire. One of the things that was lacking here was integrated training with two agencies. It apparently rarely happened before, and that's a critical factor. The, the groups have to be able to work together, especially when it comes to critical incidents such as a mass shooting. That's what we just practiced at the school with fire, integrating them into doing things. It's really important that we do those things, and that we do train together more often, and that we do things together. And having a facility that we can do things and train at is important. The more things that we can do that are simulated, you know, simulators and things such as that, the better. The training that's being, that we're required to do is becoming much more complex. They've added so many more requirements on just out of the last legislative session. It's not just going to the range and shooting your gun once or twice a year. There's a lot more we have to do. And having an environment to do that, and it's difficult. We really didn't have anything. We cobbled together something downstairs when the sewer's not breaking and the ceiling tiles aren't coming out. But it'd be great to have a training facility we can use. And we like to be able to host some training classes at our agencies. Sometimes when we host them, our people get to go for free. So that's really a nice thing to be able to do, too. So.
Yes, and I know Commander Johnson, you know, just completed an FBI training course. That's the type of thing that that knowledge comes back and helps to improve things. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
I'm getting, sorry you ran so long.
That's okay. It's an important function. Commander Johnson?
I have one more, I have one thing, sorry. When, we brought one of the new sound meters here. If you want to come see it afterwards, we'll show it up, how it works. We have two now, and we trained all our night shift people in how to use them. So hopefully we'll see some positive results from that. And I've said before, the business owners have been 100% cooperative and been ahead of us on this, on trying to make sure that they are within the legal limits. That's been their goal, and they've been very good to work with, and no arguments, no, no disagreements with them at all, so.
That, that's great, because that hasn't always been the case. And I know there are many residents over there that will very much appreciate that. So thank you.
And also, they're surprised when they find out, that's really loud, yeah, but that's legal.
Yep. All right. Again, thank you for that, and I appreciate the presentations from each of you. And we will move on to the next item, item number 13 for the water conservation efforts. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and residents. I'm Taylor Tedder, your city manager, and I'd like to share a high-level overview of our water conservation efforts this evening with you before we discuss the proposed city ordinance updates later, later on in tonight's agenda. The first question that I want to ask is why, why would we want to save water? Well, we had the first shortage declaration in the history of Lake Mead and the lower Colorado River Basin last year. Again, that was the first shortage. Since this slide was created, another shortage was declared, the stage two, tier two water reduction last week. And that further limits the amount of water that can be withdrawn from the lake, which amounts to 25,000 acre feet further reduction. However, SNWA does, does report that the state of Nevada is on track to use 240,000 acre feet of that 275,000 allocation. So that's the good news. But here at the city, we want to do our part. So I'm going to focus on some of the things that we've been planning, are planning, or planning to plan on. So the first thing is turf and grass removal. We are focusing on the removal of the non-functional turf. And we've hired the firm Rathert. Mark Rathert is the gentleman who designed the Boulder Creek Golf Course, and then Southwick Landscape Architects. They are reviewing all of our parks. And SNWA is also evaluating all of our city facilities for appropriate turf reduction. And we're looking forward to getting those plans. And as you know, the council approved the removal of 721,000 square feet of turf at your last meeting, and that will reduce the water consumption at the municipal course by 13%. It's a small steps, first, first, you know, step there, which it is 122 acre feet reduction a year. So we are planning on a future turf removal candidate sign program. That'll be a campaign so that residents can get used to the areas that will be considered for turf removal, to educate the public and not have it be a surprise. And then we're also implementing further conversion to warm-season grasses in our parks. The cool-season grasses do use a lot more water, so moving to things like Bermuda and comparable warm-season grasses. And as a first small step to show that the city's serious and wants to lead by example, we've issued an RFQ for landscape services around City Hall to develop a plan. So this would be selection of a firm, and essentially, ultimately, it would be conversion to Water Smart Plantings and ground cover around our City Hall facility here and part of Parks and Recreation. And of course, I'll share those concepts with you as we get further along. And then I know that members of the public are really anxious to see changes occur quickly as we see the lake levels continue to drop around the corner. We are continuing to work on coordination for the rebates with SNWA on all the areas that we're concentrating on. And it does take quite a bit of mapping and planning and approval process. So I would expect that we'll see turf removal starting in January. It's not just peeling it up. You have to plan the new landscaping and ground cover and design elements to replace it with. So with the Water Smart rebates, residents can take part in the SNWA's rebate program. That works for residential, commercial, and multifamily properties. It's $3 a square foot. The city's also taking advantage of that with any removals that we're looking at. So golf courses, that is a big, a big water user here in Boulder City. We have our two city-owned courses, and then there is one private golf course here in town. And water budgets were cut from 6.3 acre feet per year to four. And that, that date is April of 2024, I believe, and we'll continue working towards that. There are some significant challenges. So Boulder Creek and the municipal course are quite different. The irrigated acreage will include lakes and ponds existing within the golf course. And once it's measured, the irrigated acreage is fixed. And then there's the ability to receive the incentive from SNWA for changes related to the turf or the ponds and lakes. So we, we have been able to move forward on a rebate to shut off two ponds that were not tied to the irrigation system at the Boulder Creek Golf Course. Those will be returned to a native vegetation. And as staff, we're confident that we can achieve the four acre feet with Boulder Creek. The native areas are no longer going to be watered, and the heads will be replaced with 180-degree heads at everywhere that the native landscape is at. And we'll be looking at artificial turf for the driving range after the area where you hit the ball, since no one walks, walks on where the ball lands. The municipal course does have a lot more challenges since it has quite a bit more grass and established trees. We have been able to identify that ARPA funding plus blending that with a financial year 24 CIP project, we'll be able to consider updating the irrigation system to reduce the water consumption there. And with the change in the irrigation system, along with turf removal, and then looking at changing the driving range there as well with reducing some of the ponds, we believe that we'd be able to get to the four acre feet, but it will require major changes there. And then our partner, Cascada, who leases land from the city for the privately-owned golf course here, city staff has met with them, and they've detailed their plans. They're committed to reaching the four acre feet per year as well, doing their part. They want to continue a longstanding time here in Boulder City. So they are, are also working towards getting to the four acre feet. They've done a lot of improvements already. So what more is Boulder City doing? So we did allocate about 40% of that ARPA funds to water, water and wastewater projects in Boulder City. The Wastewater Division and Utilities Department is looking at other ways to conserve water and reuse wastewater in the city in a sustainable way, as we heard in a presentation from SNWA recently. The city's working with a landscape architect to develop new landscape requirements for new development and guidance for parkway landscaping, so that we'll have a uniform look throughout the city, so we can have, have that consistency. And our landscaping division has been planting more drought-resistant grass in our parks as well. We've also been working on updating irrigation systems on several sites to make sure that the water's used exactly where and when we need it. We're continuing that effort, especially as we consider the sidewalk project around Wilbur Square, because we want to make sure that there's no overspray and that the city is, is leading by example with, with no water running into the street or the sidewalks. And we are- And we are going to plan on reactivating the East Water Tank for raw water use. Currently, the municipal course is on potable water. And moving that to, to raw water would be a favorable concept. And for residents to better visualize what they can do with their own yards and use less water, we are looking at doing a Water Smart landscaping demonstration at ABC Park. So we would have different types of landscape alternatives. And that would serve as kind of a show-and-tell area, so to speak, so that residents can be more familiar and comfortable with alternative landscape techniques and possibly spur them into making changes on their own. And the utilities department is also exploring additional rebate programs that we could supplement the S N W A rebate with for smart irrigation controllers so that they would shut off when we are getting rain and some other, some other rebates as well. We are also looking at some other Water Smart landscape uses on projects. So the intersection at Wyoming and Nevada Way, that'll be rehabilitated in the near future. And so at the, that's the site where the National Park Service building is. And we'll be looking at utilizing artificial turf there and using metal plant sculptures in the median as a possibility to further our water conservation efforts instead of planting plants that require water. And then finally, public information. So our proposed changes that we'll talk about later, they are based on those S N W A recommendations. And other communities in the valley have adopted those. However, we are looking to share all of our information with our traditional media outlets like the utility bill insert, YouTube channel too, social media outlets. And we actually launched a new webpage on our website today. It's bcnv.org/water. And so you can go there to learn more about our water conservation efforts, learn more about rebates, your watering schedule. And you can also report water waste through See Click Fix on that page as well. But I'm here for any questions you may have and look forward to saving water.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation, obviously. This is a very, very important subject here. With regards to irrigating when raining, right? I've, I've heard now from a few people, just over the last month, we've received quite a bit of rain. And I've received some phone calls saying, hey, why are we irrigating right now if it's, if it's raining outside? What can we do to stop that? Because obviously, that's, we're overwatering at that point. And that, that would be a waste of water.
So on city property? Yeah, we'll need to convert all of our controllers for those systems to a rain sensor. It's pretty common in other areas of the country. But since we're not used to getting rain, I don't think we've, we've had those upgraded. But it's an easy fix and we'll definitely be trying to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's absolutely needed. With regards to the turf removal, you talked about, you know, it's not just replacing, you know, removing the turf and leaving dirt or rock. There has to be coverage needs to be met. We're not creating heat islands. Do we as a city have anything like a landscaping master plan or something that tells us, you know, this is the type of landscaping that we want to see in this area, in the downtown or historic region versus in these commercial areas so that we do see as we start to remove turf and are putting in new desert-adapted or native landscaping so that it is consistent and throughout thought and design throughout the city?
So we don't have necessarily a plan for specific areas in the city. But we are trying to work on that with that landscape architect. However, we do have the plant list that was recently updated in the community development department. And that, I believe that was also along with the code update where you no longer are required to have grass for points for multifamily. So people would be able to utilize that, that plant list, at least to have appropriate plants that, that use less water and are more native to the area.
And then I know you said we should hopefully start seeing the turf finally being lifted up January 2023. Obviously, as we move into the, the winter months, you know, we'll be watering less and less down to a day, a week, I think it is. But, I mean, at what point do we start? Do we no longer, are we no longer watering grass that we are going to be pulling out? You know, if we're watering grass, you know, six out of seven days a week right now in an area where we know it's going to be getting removed here in the next five months, is that not water that can start to be saved in a much more sooner process or much more, on a much smaller time scale than waiting another six months to water grass that is going to ultimately be removed?
Yeah, we can definitely look into that and see what we can do. Definitely don't want everything to turn brown just yet. But, but we'll see if there's some ways that we can try to cut back on that.
No, obviously. And, and, you know, it's one of those things we can, you know, deal with a little bit of brown now to hopefully prevent, you know, the inability to not have any grass at all if we, if we're trying to be smart about our use of water. I do appreciate, obviously, the efforts that we are trying to do. Obviously, it takes a lot of time. It's not, it's not simple. It's, it's a long process. We are working hand-in-hand with S N W A on the measures that they are wanting to see put forward at the municipal level. So I appreciate all the work that staff is doing. But as we always say, the sooner we can get on this, the, the better. We, you know, the, the time was yesterday and here we are today. So as soon as we can get on this, we need to.
I completely agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I'm going to agree that this, this is, this was yesterday. This was, this was due a year ago. But I really like the idea of setting up an area of ABC Park and maybe even not so much a grant, but focusing, spotlighting homeowners who have successfully removed their turf and replaced it with Water, Water Smart landscaping. And I know some of, even some of the homes here in the historic district have, one in particular, that's recently gone through the process of taking out their front turf and, and putting in this new landscaping. And maybe an opportunity in the utility billing or however, or on this website of saying, you know, we know that you like the way this looks, but this could look good also. You know, it's, I, I think there are people who are sort of tied into the continuity look, especially of the historic district, that may get pushback. You know, people are not, not particularly thrilled with the idea of removing their turf. So that was one thing that I'm, I'm really hopeful that this is addressed as, at crisis level. You know, that, that that's how important it is.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that.
Yeah, it's, it's changing a lot of behaviors all at once. So thank you, though. I'm, I'm really glad to hear about everything that's being done right now, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Couple of items I had, you know, probably in the time since you put your presentation together, because I believe it was only on last Tuesday, the federal government has now declared a tier-two water emergency, which will result in another 8% cut to the allocation for Southern Nevada. And since we purchase all of our water through the Southern Nevada Water Authority, that has an impact on us as well. You know, the S N W A administrator, from what I've seen, has issued some fairly strongly worded messages to Congress, to other users of the Colorado River. S N W A is often held up as an agency that has done an outstanding job in conserving water, reusing water. I, I, I hear back from people that, oh, we want to turn everything brown. We want to ruin things. We want to do this. We want to do that. That, that's not the purpose of this. And I, I think some people, you know, they miss the point when they say that. I believe that the community development department, and I think this is more than a year ago, had put the plant palette together that show plants that are either native or drought tolerant or desert adaptive that can be used here in Boulder City. We want shade. I believe Councilmember Adams had mentioned before the heat dome effect where we do not want that. We do not want a community, our homes, our, our own yards to be devoid of things that actually provide shade and help out. You know, I believe it was two years ago, there was a question about the landscaping for the Boulder City Parkway project. It was unanimous direction from the council not to plant palm trees. Palm trees tend to provide little shade, require a significant amount of water, and require some expensive maintenance. And yet we wound up with palm trees, very expensive palm trees. You mentioned something at the intersection of Wyoming and Nevada Way near the Park Service building there. You know, metal sculptures? Well, I'm assuming they're durable. But, you know, do they provide that shade? You know, or do they exacerbate the heat dome effect? I have no idea. But any idea like that, I think, needs to be looked at in terms of that. If folks would go and take a look at that palette, and I, you know, I, I, I know it was my suggestion to use ABC Park as a demonstration where people could go and look at some different ideas, whether that's reflected on something that's already been done in a yard or something that the architect designs. That will give, I hope, some people some thoughts on this, that you can still have some landscaping. It's beneficial actually to have that landscaping in different ways that they may go about doing that. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're finally going to get that going. With regard to the reuse of water, S N W A made a presentation at our last council meeting. I believe it is in the city's long-term interest that we find ways to reuse our own water rather than the return credits. I understand S N W A has an emphasis on that. But if we never take the water, there's two things that happens. That water stays in Lake Mead and we don't pay for it. And since the significant water users in this community are our golf courses, we need to figure out not only how to reduce the total amount of water they're using, but how to make that water cheaper as well. Because the other thing that I heard S N W A talk about in the last few days are going to be excess water charges. So they're going to be looking at their rate structure. And I believe we as a community need to do the same because we may see that reflected in what S N W A is going to charge in the future for the water that it delivers to Boulder City. So having our own idea, it's something I believe the Utility Advisory Committee needs to look at in the very near future. What do our water rates currently look like? And do they reflect charging a, whether it's a commercial or residential user? If they're charging an enormous, excuse me, using an enormous amount of water, how's that impacting everyone else? And how, how's it going to impact our water supply in the future? I guess the last thing, again, I'll just reiterate. I, I think, you know, it's been said by Councilmember Adams, I believe Councilmember Bridges, we're past the no-kidding stage here. The government, as I say, they've declared those tier-two. The, in addition to the reports that were being made as far as the response from S N W A, it was also noted that during the past month, Hoover Dam has seen the, one of the lowest water releases because of the water that was not being used downstream. So I think people are starting to get serious about this. We don't need to make up stuff about what's happening. And I appreciate the work that staff has done on getting things together to make recommendations to our residents so that we can still enjoy the landscaping we have and keep things looking fine, even though we may be doing it with less grass in the future. Anyone else? Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we will take a 15-minute recess. We will come back to session at 7:20. All right, I will call the meeting back to order. And we will proceed to item number 14, introduction of Bill Number 1918. This is a bill introduction. I will introduce Bill Number 1918. Waive the reading except for title.
Introduction of Bill 1918 and Ordinance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, Approving Agreement Number 22-1991, A Land Lease Between the City of Boulder City and the State of Nevada for 0.94 acres, Located at the Northwest Corner of Boulder City Parkway and Business Route 93, Also Known as Truck Route, To Be Used For the Development of a Railroad Museum Facility. Bill Number 1918 will be considered at the September 13, 2022 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Item number 15, Resolution 7508. Mr. City Manager, did you want to introduce this as well?
Sure. So our court administrator, Cindy Garcia, will be handling this item. But it does really center around the, you know, labor shortage that, that is kind of going on with, with court employees. So Cindy?
Thank you so much, Cindy Garcia. I'm the Court Administrator for the Municipal Court. We've been, like everyone else, having trouble finding employees. And right now, we're, our concern, our main concern is hanging on to the ones that we have. We like them and we would like them to stay. But with the competition with other courts, I know the chief had mentioned also, we, with category-one post-certified, we lose, we'll lose our people to other departments as well. And we would just like the, the wage for our part-time court marshals, if we could raise the range up. It, it's not a small amount, but it's enough, I think, that we can keep the people that we have. So if you had any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments? I, you know, again, so that we don't startle anyone, the, the actual increase, the, the low range is 1712. And the proposal is to go to 2057?
Yes.
And the upper range is at 2232 to go to $30.22?
That's correct.
Okay. Again, just the way you phrased it, I, I, not a bad way to phrase it.
Yes.
You know, this is a boost in wages. And we are seeing that in many different job classifications right now. But these are folks that have significant certifications and training and, and all that. I certainly feel it's a reasonable amount. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
My only comment is that I think it's also important to note that, that range is within the current budget of the court's budget right now. So it can be accommodated without any changes. So I think that's another important factor.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will move for approval then of Resolution 7508, Increasing the Pay Range for the Part-Time Court Marshal Positions.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Garcia, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, Consideration of Bill Number 1917. Madam City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Brittany Walker, City Attorney, here to give an overview of the changes that Bill 1817 seeks to modify of our current city code. As we've discussed at length this evening, there is a water shortage that is severe, and the Southern Nevada Water Authority is calling on all member agencies to take mandatory conservation members, including seasonal watering restrictions, golf course water budgets, grass replacement program, and water waste penalties. Staff presented these recommended changes to the Utility Advisory Committee on July 6, and again on August 10, to go over the additional enforcement provisions. To give an overview of the current conservation code, existing law already provides the following regulations. So under current law, the installation of new turf is currently prohibited in front yards. Installation of new turf is prohibited in non-residential areas, except golf courses, parks, schools, and cemeteries. Persons are required to diligently repair all water leaks. Persons must adhere to seasonally based water, watering schedule. Golf courses must adhere to water budgets. A person cannot allow water to spray or flow into the street or gutter for longer than ten minutes or twenty minutes. Persons cannot allow water to collect in pools greater than a depth of three inches. There are current exceptions for vehicle washing, swimming pool draining, and commercial plant nurseries. Under current law, water features cannot exceed twenty-five square feet in surface area, and then fines for violation, again, existing law, are determined based on meter size, and escalate to an increasing amount after each repeated violation, ranging from seventy-five dollars for the first violation, if the meter is one to three inches, and up to two thousand dollars for a fifth violation, if the meter is three inches or greater. Again, with the Utilities Advisory Committee's input and recommendation, we prepared the attached modifications. The changes that are proposed by Bill 1917 are as follows. First, there are some changes that were really done for, to make the ordinance more streamlined. There were water conservations, for example, in Chapter Eight. They really didn't belong in Chapter Eight, and so those were struck, struck, and moved to Chapter Fourteen, as they were more appropriate in that chapter. So an additional change would be, while right now you can allow water to continuously flow or spray into the public right-of-way for ten or twenty minutes, under this proposed bill, it would be prohibited for any length of time. However, there are exceptions built in for vehicle washing, against swimming pool draining, ordinary maintenance, for example, cleaning of driveways, sidewalks, or household items in which you'd need water, dust control for construction, and then city necessity for a public purpose, for example, street sweeping, cleaning crosswalks and bus stops, saw cutting for repairs, et cetera. And of course, emergency threats to loss of life or property. Another change the bill would make is there are parameters for installing new turf in new schools and parks and cemeteries. So for those, again, it would be new schools, parks, and cemeteries. There would have just certain parameters in place for installing turf. New swimming pools may not exceed six hundred square feet in area, and under this proposal, the swimming pools must drain into the water. And then watering is prohibited on Sunday. Currently, it's a free day. And then installing any turf in new residential construction is prohibited. Then, in accordance with state law, non-functional turf must be removed by 2027. Non-functional turf is essentially any turf that does not provide a recreational benefit. Examples would be turf in traffic medians, HOA common areas, that are not parks, and other decorative turf. Restrictions on man-made lakes and operations of water features are, go from twenty-five square feet to ten square feet. The fines are not changed. However, the city did add additional enforcement provisions. Under the existing code, there wasn't a specific process or procedure for enforcement that delineated what the notice would entail, whether there was a hearing that could be requested, appeal rights, et cetera. The draft ordinance puts all those in place, so that if an individual receives a notice of violation, they can, they can request a hearing to contest that. If they don't, if they aren't happy with the way the hearing goes, they can also appeal. So that's, that's built in. The proceeds of the fines are also specified to be used for water conservation purposes. For example, customer incentives such as turf rebate programs, smart irrigation meters, and water-efficient irrigation systems. The Utility Advisory Committee also recommended that the ordinance contain a requirement that the city send a warning letter prior to issuing a notice of violation. So this change is reflected in the UAC-recommended version of the bill. You'll see two versions of the bill. The first is the version that was presented to you, and then the second version is the UAC's recommendation of adding a warning letter, which is in the enforcement provisions. Either one can be adopted. From a legal drafting standpoint, it's, I would say, not, it's not recommended to put the warning letter in the process, because it's not necessary. Typically, staff will give a warning letter ahead of time, no matter what. For example, especially with our code enforcement, right now, we give people a minimum of three warnings before it escalates to issuing a citation, and we receive voluntary compliance ninety-five percent of the time. And so that process wouldn't change, whether it's in this ordinance or not. However, it doesn't hurt anything to have that requirement in there. So again, the City Council can choose to adopt whichever version the City Council feels is appropriate. With that, are there any questions about the proposed bill?
Thank you. And again, this will be a public hearing, so questions on specifics are appropriate at this time. Comments probably should be reserved following the public hearing. Are there any questions about the specifics of this? All right. I will open the public hearing then. Anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on this? And again, if you'd please state your full name, and you can just put ditto marks on the sign-in sheet.
I'm the only one there. So I haven't done ditto's in years. Overall, I think it's a good proposal. I did read it in depth at home before coming. I think it would be enforceable, which is a big thing. It doesn't help us any to put something on paper if we don't have enforcement behind it. This seemed to satisfy those, so I would be in favor of it. The only thing I would like to see is a smaller swimming pool size, but that's the only thing I disagree with. Other than that, I would say the ordinance as written is a good one, and we should follow it. Thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone wishing to make public comment via phone call, you can call in at this time. Again, this is a public hearing regarding changes to the ordinance for our This is a public hearing regarding changes for water conservation ordinance. Anyone wishing Madam Deputy City Clerk, were there any written comments received for this public hearing?
No written comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing no others then. We will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, thank you. So you had talked about the only difference between the two that are sitting before us is the recommendation, the variance of including a warning in there. Do we have any other processes that exist in the city right now that are similar to this, where it doesn't state that we have to have a warning, but we do? I know that you said we already give warnings. What would that process be?
I would say our code enforcement. You know, typically, our code enforcement officer gives at least three warnings, and verbal, written, et cetera, before escalating it to a citation. It's actually rare that it escalates to a citation. A lot of times, the code enforcement officer will even solicit my input before escalating it to a citation, because it's, it's just not something that's, that is a criminal penalty versus this would be a civil penalty, so it's a little bit different. But that is an example.
So it's not necessary to put it in, but if it was included, then it would become necessary to do it?
Yes. We would be required to send a warning letter before we could issue a notice of violation.
Okay, thank you. And just, I mean, it's been a water theme today, I think, and we've been talking about this, and I appreciate the city's staff being willing to work on this so hard, to be able to present this here up to us today. Also, SNWA coming with these recommendations. I think now's the time to act on this. I like what I see before us right now. It's, it's important to be responsible, a responsible municipality as far as water goes, and to be a partner with the other municipalities in the area. We all draw from the same lake. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all this discussion about water. I mean, this is, this is a real serious deal, and to address the pool size, I was reading an article that pool builders were not particularly happy about SNWA limiting the size to six hundred square feet, that the average right now is about four seventy-five, but there was somebody in Las Vegas trying to get a permit for a five thousand square foot swimming pool. And if, if there's an average now, it just creates a limit, which I think is really, really important. I like the fact that there is a Chapter Fourteen. There is a conservation, water conservation ordinance, that it's not just tucked in under utilities. And I have mixed thoughts about that violation issue. I mean, if that's, if that's common practice now, do we need to create an ordinance? Do we need to put it in there? But if it's common practice, is that something over time that might not become common practice? I mean, suddenly you have something that's determined by whoever code, whoever's in the code enforcement position. It's almost like it would be more equitable to know that they're, that they have to follow this procedure, rather than somebody becoming overeager and saying, "We're just going to send out fines," a request for a fine. So, but thank you very much. I can tell that this was a lot of hard work, and hopefully it will have the necessary outcome. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Fox?
With the, the pool size, the six hundred square feet, does that include the depth, or is it just the surface area?
It's just the surface area, but it is a cumulative number. So in other words, you couldn't have a four hundred square foot pool, and then a separate, like two four hundred square foot pools. It'd have to be, that would, that would count toward the six hundred square foot limit, so of all of the, the surface area in the, in the water.
Of all the water features, okay. So if I have one pool, and then a jacuzzi and a waterfall, or a lazy river, it's all combined?
It's all cumulative, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you very much. With regards to the necessity for the warning letter, I appreciate, I think, the, the effort there to try and, you know, we're trying to ease people into this, because this is, we are asking people to change, you know, what they may have become accustomed to for, you know, all of their lives, and how they use their water. So I do appreciate that. However, I don't really see it as being a problem, as the city is suddenly going to start out and, you know, citing everybody right away with fines. But I do think it would create a situation where if we have a situation where there is gross negligence happening, in which a serious issue of water waste is occurring, and all we are left to do is to send them a citation, I think that it kind of creates a situation in which we're taking away a little bit of the agency of our code enforcement to determine what is absolutely, you know, imperative that we get these things wrapped under control, and what is, you know, us being able to work and make sure that people are getting caught up. To that, I will say, as far as enforcement goes, I would hate to see us going out there and citing people, because they have a little bit of water coming out of their lawn while our parks continue to have issues with irrigation, and seeing the water, you know, nine times out of ten, if I follow the water in the gutter, I end up at a, at a city park oftentimes. So, you know, we need to get our own house in order, I think, as well, to make sure that, you know, we are leading by example. I think this ordinance is, it's necessary, right? I think it's really important. You know, we at SNWA, we get a lot of flack when we pass these, these things, but, you know, SNWA is not an enforcement agency. It is up to us, as a municipality, to make sure that we are enforcing these recommendations, taking them into consideration, and putting them in place. And so I do think it is, it is very necessary. So I also know that it was pointed in there that some of the water waste, enforcement of the water waste would not begin until January 1 of 2023. Again, I know that we are trying to get people caught up and understanding, but I don't think there's a single person who lives here in Boulder City that doesn't know that we're in a water crisis. Maybe you have some deniers out there, but anybody can go out there and can see it right here in our backyard, to see just how serious the situation is. Again, I don't think it's the city's intent to just go out and fining everybody, but I think if we have, you know, serious offenders, potentially, saying, you know, "We don't need to enforce this for another six months," I think that's, it's not six months anymore, but, you know, that's, I just don't think that that's responsible. So personally, I think that this should go ahead with everything else. I don't think we need a postponed date of enforcement of January 1, 2023. I think it can go in with the rest of this. I think people are aware that we are in this situation. You know, my only question would be, and, you know, maybe this is a tough one to swallow, but what does this mean for something like the water portion of our Fourth of July Parade, something that is beloved by everybody? Something that is beloved by everybody, but, you know, is not exactly a great example of smart water use? Is this, would that be affected under this ordinance at all?
You know, that's really a good point. The, that's really a separate, it's not specifically called out in this ordinance. It could be argued that it falls within the exception for water use for a public purpose. But that's really a policy decision that can be made separately by, that we can decide not to do that in the future. You know, we can eliminate that portion. So that's, you know, that's really a question separate and apart from this because it's a bigger decision for this community, I think.
I understand and I appreciate, I appreciate the candor. You know, it's my favorite part, obviously, but also, you know, we timed it. How long does it take for that street to go dry? And it was this year, which was exceptionally cool for Fourth of July. I think it was 15 minutes or something before, you know, the street was once again bone dry. So, you know, it's something that we do need to take into consideration. I'm glad that this doesn't completely prohibit it, but I think it's something that we do also need to discuss to go along with these efforts. Other than that, I have no other questions, but those would be my recommendations is that rather than postponing any type of enforcement, which also, if we're going to need more enforcement, I think there's a good opportunity to partner with SNWA on that as well because they do have some support there. Other than that, this is very important for us to move forward with, so I'm happy to see that we are.
Thank you. There is an exception for car washing in there too, so we could always say that's what we're doing on the Fourth of July. You know, I think having the requirement for a warning letter is appropriate and that would not prohibit the code enforcement officer from utilizing additional warning letters, would it?
Oh, not at all. We could send multiple warning letters. We would just be required to send at least one.
At least one, all right. And, you know, Councilmember Adams brings up a good point about, you know, the timing, if there's something. But if someone had a broken main going into the house and they weren't home and it was reported that, you know, we have this issue, would that be prohibited for the city shutting the water off under a situation like that?
I don't know that we could shut the water off. They're current on their bill and it's a, that would be an extreme measure. I don't know that that's really addressed. I mean, we can shut the water off if fines and things are not paid. But as far as if there was an emergency situation, that might be some, another provision of law might apply there, not really this ordinance.
Yeah, I would think, you know, if it's an emergency situation, you know, we don't have to address that this evening, but that may be something to look into that if that were the situation, rather than letting it run for a week, that the city would have the authority to shut the water off to a residence or a business that had sustained that damage and was not responding, whether they weren't at home or weren't able to do it or whatever the situation might be. Councilmember Jorgensen, did you have a comment?
Kind of a comment question. So if we didn't wait until, say, January to enforce something of this nature, how long do you think it would take for us to get the information out so that everyone had the information? I know we have a lot of different sources or a lot of different ways that we get the information out, so I'd want them to be aware of what these changes were before we started enforcing.
Yes, when this, if this is approved, we would start immediately getting the word out to everyone, especially emphasizing the date that it would be enforced, but having the public outreach so that people can plan and get ready for it so that there are no issues when it does go into effect.
What is the typical amount of time for that when we put new code or new things into?
I would just say the only two provisions that have the effective date of January 1st are the swimming pool requirement and the, and the not allowing water to flow in the public right-of-way. So, you know, the situations I imagine occurring, well, one, with the pools, you're just essentially, if somebody hasn't gotten their pool approved yet, they could, if we have it effective January 1st, they could get those permits in now, right? But if we had it effective sooner, then that prohibition would apply sooner. With regard to the flow or spray of water, that's going to depend on what the issue is. I mean, if it's like an irrigation leak or something like that, I mean, that's, you know, I think that the city wants to do, I think the city wants to make sure property owners have an opportunity to fix that. So I don't know that we would just send a notice of violation and fine you right away when, without just, hey, you know, you have a leak here, you need to fix that. If it's something more egregious, I can't imagine an example. Maybe somebody's just letting the hose run in the yard, I don't know. You know, we could, if the effective date's not moved, we could force that more quickly. But just realistically, that effective date only affects those two items, just to be clear.
Any other questions or comments? I believe I had heard regarding the pool sizes too, that the number of permits in all of Clark County for pools larger than 600 square feet was minuscule. It was a very small number. You know, a 600-square-foot pool would be 20 foot by 30 foot. But I do want to confirm that municipal pools are not subject to that requirement.
Yes, they would not be. It's only for single-family residences.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Bill Number 1917?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept Bill Number 1917 as drawn by the Utility Advisory Committee, including the first letter of violation.
Anyone wishing to second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Madam City Attorney. And I think as Councilmember Adams pointed out, we've got some city parks that probably need to be looked at by January 1st. Next item, Number 17, regarding bill draft request for the upcoming legislative session. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So the 23th session of the Nevada Legislature will begin on February 6th of 2023. Myself and the city attorney do serve on behalf of the city as lobbyists in the legislative session. And the city is allowed to draft a bill request for the upcoming session and staff is seeking direction on next steps. The bill draft request must describe the problem to be solved, the intended effect or the goals of the proposed bill. The existing state law that is sought to be changed or affected by the measure must also be identified in the request and known costs associated with measure must also be identified. Our deadline to submit the request is September 1st. So this item is to serve as discussion, to talk about what the council would like to see.
Thank you. Is staff making any recommendations regarding a bill draft request?
Not at this time.
Thank you. I do have one suggestion regarding the change that was made to the redevelopment agency by the legislature in 2017. I had requested the handout of the bill that made that change. It was Assembly Bill Number 80. And if you look at page number seven, I believe it is, it was page seven of that bill, there was language that was added. If you look at Section 1.8 there, it says, "If at any time after the adoption of a redevelopment plan by the legislative body, the agency desires to take an action that will constitute a material deviation from the plan or otherwise determines that it would be necessary or desirable to amend the plan, the agency must recommend the amendment of the plan to the legislative body. An amendment may include the addition of one or more areas to any redevelopment plan." And then the wording that was added was, "But may not include the removal of an area from any redevelopment area regardless of whether that area was initially a part of the redevelopment area or was added later through amendment." If we look at the map that I had also requested be made available to council and members of the public, it shows what the redevelopment area in Boulder City is. It is, in my opinion, an extremely large area. And what has occurred is that as our conservative growth policies have allowed for residential construction, some of that is justified or attempted to be justified by the fact that, oh, it's going to help support our schools and those types of things. We find that that land is included in the redevelopment area. And my understanding of the funding for the redevelopment area is that it uses ad valorem tax, specifically the property tax, so that any increase in property tax as a piece of property is improved, such as by building a number of homes on it, that increase in tax does not go towards schools, does not go towards fire and police protection, does not go to the city. It goes into the redevelopment agency. And looking up some figures over the past several years, the revenue for the redevelopment agency in 2017 was listed at a little over $648,000. The estimated revenue this year is $1,274,138. So essentially doubled that. And I believe, not able to find specific information, but I believe that much of that increase is occurring because the homes that were built, Boulder Hills, by Storybook Homes, all of that increase from the new property taxes that are being charged are not going to support our schools. That money is going into the redevelopment area agency fund because, again, if you look at the map, that area is included in that. There was part of the ballot question, I believe in 2010, that said the land around Boulder Creek, otherwise known as Track 350, was removed from the RDA, but that was done prior to the change in 2017. The issue I have with it is, one, we see quite a bit of money, revenue, going from residential development homeowners rather than supporting community needs like schools and fire and police. It's going into this redevelopment agency. I don't like the idea of the legislature saying, "Well, you can add to things, but you can't take away from things." And that's essentially what that bill did in 2017 was to tell us as a community, "You can't do that. You can't manage your own economic development. You can't do these things." I don't think that's fair to the community. I also have a question as to why this money is going into a redevelopment agency that is already fairly well-funded. The ending balance is projected to have gone from 2017 of $767,000 to over $4 million this year. I don't see the need, I don't see the requirement, as we do other projects here, not using redevelopment agency funds such as street improvements, things like that, to be putting that much money into that type of support when we can certainly use it for the betterment of other things in the community. So with that, I will ask if there are any other suggestions, comments, questions? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I will just say that I think that this is a worthy bill draft request. I agree. It's, we're talking about a residential area here that is contributing to the RDA, not a business area, not a zone that would, you know, generally or normally benefit from the RDA zone. So here we have a neighborhood or residents that are contributing to something that they might not, that they won't necessarily be receiving that. It'll maybe indirect benefits from, you know, business development, but they don't receive any of that direct benefit from where that, those tax dollars are going. So I think that it is a reasonable ask and I don't think it's too much of one, too big of one to ask either.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I would like to better understand what the purpose of excluding the removal of an area. It says they may include the addition of, but not include the removal of. What was the foundation of that decision?
It's not explained in the bill and the, when I did my research on it, I did not find any specific testimony regarding that. Madam City Attorney, I don't know if you have any. I know you were working at the legislature at that time, I believe, but...
Mm-hmm. Yes, this was the City of Reno's bill. And I believe, I spoke with the assemblyman who proposed this change and I think there was some concern that property could be removed from a redevelopment area to get around the requirements that are required of the use of redevelopment funds. It was really a specific issue in Reno is my understanding of why the request was made to add this. This was, again, there's no legislative record here. This is just, you know, what I've heard from the, so that's my understanding, but that's what, from an assembly person who serves up there.
And I do think that there are ways that that may be worded to not make it such a blanket exclusion that Boulder City is forever prohibited in managing how its economic development works. You know, we're fortunate here, I believe, that many of our businesses did survive the pandemic and have been doing well. When you look at this map and look at the amount of open space that is included in here, I don't get it, but this was done back in 1996, I believe. This city should have the ability to manage what it wants so we could suggest wording that would apply only to perhaps communities under 25,000. That's done in several instances. But, you know, whatever Reno's concern was, it is having a negative impact, I believe, on the management of our city. Councilmember Bridges, did you have additional questions?
No, I was just wondering, usually a change like this will have a specific consequence or a specific intention in terms of changing the wording. And this is a significant one. I mean, to go from, it may include the addition of, but to say specifically that it cannot include the exclusion from. Told me that there was something that happened or somebody's, a problem that occurred that this was the solution to, and I didn't know what that problem was.
And unfortunately, it's not, you know, there's nothing in the record from, I believe they held two hearings on the bill, and I did not find a mention of it. and I did not find a mention of it. I, I think that a, something to consider is, redevelopment agency plans were created even prior to 1991. This plan was created for Boulder City in 1996. Nobody had any issues with adding or removing areas during that period of time up until this 2017, and yet there's no mention of what their concern was.
Thank you, thank you.
But I do think it's a significant concern for this city that was able to be addressed with Track 350 but cannot be addressed under this bill for Track 349 or the Storybook Homes. Anyone else? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yeah, I mean, that is a concern when you consider the tax dollars and then the amount of people that end up utilizing the services that are already stretched a little bit because of our low tax rate. In this process, since it can't be done, if it was done, would it need to be worded, as he said in a proposition of what we would like to see as an included or excluded portion of this section? So would we go in with the exception that you said of maybe communities under the size of 25,000? How would we go about that?
The legislature doesn't like to put in population caps. They, the LCB really frowns upon that. They do it if they have to, if they can't get everybody to agree. But in general, I think the course of action could be, if council wants to use this as our BDR, we could, you know, explain the issue, just look at potentially removing it or removing it with a clarification that there has, that there's certain reasons that property can be removed. It can't be removed for this reason, but it can be removed for this reason. And then potentially, if we can't, if the other jurisdictions don't agree or the other legislators are, feel strongly this has to stay in, you know, we can, we can request the population cap as a backup plan, I would say, as an amendment that we could do so that we can, we can allow us to amend our own plans.
And I would just add, you know, I thank you for that explanation. This bill, or this NRS 279 for redevelopment agencies over time has had several of these population caps put in as communities look to essentially manage these agencies for themselves to fit what's happening in that community. Henderson, for example, has carved out a population base and maximum that allows them to contribute, I believe it's 18% of their RDA funds, directly to schools. Reno thought, apparently, thought that was a good idea, and that's actually in this AB 70. They changed those population limits so that Reno fit into that category as well. So I agree with Madam City Attorney. We should probably ask for something like, if this area, this parcel is specifically for residential use, that the cities may, we'll use the term "may", withdraw that from their redevelopment agency plan. Do you think that would be...
Yes, I think that would, that would work and may have, may... I think that that may solve the issue of what the, why this was added in the first place. So, and of course, as the session goes, we'll bring forward any feedback that we've received from legislators and other jurisdictions. And if we need to, we'll get your approval to amend it, and you can look at that exact language. You know, we can, we can show you the sample language before we pursue it too. So we, so that, if this is the topic, we just need the topic so we can submit the request, and the language can come later.
Does that answer your questions, Councilmember?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? You know, then I would move to provide direction that a bill draft review be formulated that will allow the city to remove parcels from our current redevelopment agency plan as in review of the use of the tax proceeds, the ad valorem tax proceeds, property tax proceeds, most appropriate for the use of the land, of the property. Is that sufficient, Madam City Attorney? Would you prefer other wording or...
Could you just repeat that one more time?
No. Again, the, the idea would be that the bill, the, the current NRS would be amended to allow a agency, a local government, to remove a parcel of land should that local government have determined that the use of the land is primarily residential and the property tax increase for improvements are better directed at schools and local services.
Thank you.
And if you want me to do it a third time, it'll be a different answer, I can assure you.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. We'll, we'll get it submitted by the deadline.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item number 18, City Manager's Report.
Yes, tonight we have the City Manager's Report, which includes the Claims Paid and Financial Report for July of 2022. There are three items that I want to note this evening to highlight. So page 462 through 465, that is the utility revenues, and those will appear low because the year-to-date balance is negative due to the required year-end adjustment to accrue revenues on June 30th for the July utility bills because they relate to May and June usage. So that's one thing that I wanted to point out. And the second item on page 474, we did change the format for all of the CIP projects for the city, and that includes the projects for the utility as well. So it does make it easier to understand and read and see which funds were carried over and which are new projects. So that will be helpful. And then on 476, we did add a page related to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, the VERF, so you can see which vehicles or equipment have been purchased and moved forward. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Item number 19 is our final public comment period. Final public comment may be on any issue. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak. No action may be taken on issues raised during the final public comment period. And as always, we ask speakers to be civil and concise. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in final public comment? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward and state your name and sign in.
Signing police kinds of reminds me of an old game show, but somebody stole the pen, so... I just want to comment on Chief Shea and his staff's report today. It's very interesting, very eye-opening. You know, we think we've got this nice sleepy little town and, you know, everything's all peaceful and happy and stuff, but some of the statistics that the chief was sharing with the people should be an eye-opener. I mean, really told me, you know, showed me that our police department is a lot busier than I thought. You know, and must be doing a good job because, I mean, you don't see anything or hear anything, but I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Shea and all of his employees in the police department. You know, I think they do a pretty good job, but his report today was rather eye-opening, so... And, I mean, in a good, you know, a lot of it in a good way, so don't get me wrong. I think our cops are doing a good job, but thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeShane? I should have had you speak first. You could have used another set of ditto marks there.
I'm not as tall as he is. Judy DeShane, I have, from your last council meeting, there was item 12 when you were discussing the park redo, you know, putting sidewalk on. And at one point, they mentioned, you know, we can't have grass so between the sidewalk and the curb, putting rocks or something in there. Instead of rocks, I would like to see something, what I call quarter minus, I don't know what the real term is, but for the reason that putting that in there, if there, if we get rain, the rain will go down through and sink into the aquifer, hopefully, at some point in time. And the other thing is, is that gets, you know, once it's packed down a little bit of water, it's a fairly hard and smooth surface. So when you have people, like when we have a festival or whatever, and you have people walking on the sidewalk, and frequently, you know, you run into somebody and you stand there and talk to them, well, there's, on this perimeter sidewalk like that, people might be trying to get around them. That hard surface, that quarter minus, it's very easy to walk on. You could push a stroller or a bicycle through it or something. It would give additional walking surface when it's needed. It's easy to clean up. It really does great for weed control, so you wouldn't have a big problem with weeds. You will get some, there's no getting around it, but it, it does, but it would make, give additional walking space and be a better landscape than rocks. You have rocks and people, especially kids, will pick them up and throw them all over the minute your back is turned. So I would suggest, seriously, considering you doing that quarter minus instead of rocks for filling where we're getting rid of grass because it does make a great surface for walking or if you have to wheel something across it. And then the other thing is, kind of a dead thing that's been a couple of while, has to do with zoning Track 350. A few weeks ago, we drove through Storybook, and we drove through the other two developments that are there that have been there for quite some time, I believe, because they were there when I moved here already, about eight, nine years ago. But Storybook had 10, only 10 houses under construction. All the rest had people living in them. So there is definitely a call for R17 zoning and those types of houses. When you went down to the, the second little group, I think those are R10s probably or expanded R17s. I'm not sure because they were fairly decent-sized lots, but they weren't super huge. And of course, there was nothing empty in there. But then you get to the one at the bottom, there were, there are really huge lawns, really huge houses and all that, and those are R15s, but they were supposed to be R17s, is my understanding. Now, I do not know how that development got done, whether it was city land that was bought or if it was private land, in which case they, you know, can arrange to do whatever they want, however they want. But at any rate, there were two lots in there that looked like they were empty, and they looked like they were the size of an R17. So I do believe the size was supposed to be R17s. There, but we have a need for the R17s. And if anybody wants an R115, all they would have to do is buy two lots next to each other instead of one big lot because the remark was made, even if we have to sell the land for less, we need the R15s and R10s. No, that is not fair to the residents of Boulder City because you guys are supposed to be fiscally responsible. When the voters passed the money from the sale of Track 350 going to a pool, they were expecting approximately $20 million, I believe, or more. So you sell it for less just so people who do not live here can move here and get a bargain on their million-dollar house? No, that's not fair. It's not right to be done. And I really think it doesn't matter if it's you or if you postpone it till the other two new members come in. It's not fair for it to be done that way because the regular citizens of Boulder City that don't have a pool, either because they don't have room, they can't afford it, or whatever reason, they need the community pool. And I recall Cam Walker, and this would have been probably in 2017 or so, when he was running for reelection, we talked, I talked to him then, and he said the community had been promised a pool for close to 20 years now or more. And he really felt it was a big thing that the council needed to do something about getting that pool. And now is the time, and you cannot wholesale land for people that don't even live here and hurt the people that do live here. And thank you for listening. Oh, I also need to remind you that we still owe about $20 million on a water line that we can't even use. So selling something at a discount when we still owe money on something from years ago is ridiculous.
Thank you.
Now I'll quit.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak? All right, anyone wishing to call in may do so at this time. Again, this is our final public comment period for the City Council meeting. This is the final public comment period for the City Council meeting. Madam Deputy City Clerk, were there any emails received for the final public comment period?
No emails, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will close the final public comment period then and move to our last item, City Council Reports. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the only thing I'll report as far as SNWA goes is, you know, probably the last year so that I have been on that board really was the culmination of all that work and effort over the last year was in the new ordinance that was just passed. I think it was my second meeting that I attended in which, you know, the definitions were agreed to for turf removal... to for turf removal and non-functional turf, you know, all the way up until the most recent meeting being the recommendation for the, the pool size limit. So I'm happy to see that the city is, is moving forward in tandem with the rest of the community. I know that the other municipalities around are also going to be passing the same measures, if they haven't already, I know that there are others that are coming up as well. So with that regard, I'm proud to see that we are doing that work. With Southern Nevada Health District, I, we will have a meeting this Thursday. Obviously, there is a lot of conversation around monkeypox, so there will, will be a presentation on that. If you have any questions about it, I encourage anybody to go to SNHD.org, which has a lot of useful information, recommendations for those who should, are recommend, recommended to consider the vaccination for that. It is a, we are limited in supply, so that is the reason for, for looking for guidelines for that, but if you do have any questions at all, I do highly recommend you visit SNHD.org. It's right there on the front page, so you can get some of those questions, and maybe I'll have a little bit more answers after our meeting on Thursday, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox? Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you.
Councilmember Bridges?
Two items, my usual plug for emergency aid of Boulder City, that available to residents who are suffering an emergency is assistance with rent and utilities and access to a well-stocked food pantry. The second thing is, I have mentioned my appointment on the SNRPC Board, and today we passed an amendment to draft, well, we passed, okay, let me say this right. We decided to draft an amendment to the NRS regarding the requirement for a regional planning coalition for counties whose population are over 700,000. So direction was given to pursue this amendment that changes the requirement that having a regional planning coalition is mandatory to one in which it is optional to change the musts and shoulds to may. So it's not that there will not be a Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition, but there will not have to be one, and that those entities that choose not to participate in it won't have to participate in it, and if they want to get down to business to see what it is they're going to do, they can do it with those who want to participate. So that's, that is going to go forward to make an amendment to the NRS. And that's it.
Thank you. School is back in session. For those folks who got used to being late for work and driving quickly down Adams Boulevard, please slow it down. The school lim, or schools zones have been identified now by time, but still keep an eye out for the little ones, you know, they're new going back to school as well. So I've already seen a couple of not very clever moves by drivers in the school zones. Keep an eye out for the kids, folks. I know everybody's not used to them, but school is back in session now. And with that as well, Councilmember Adams had mentioned vaccines. You know, I heard last week that testing in New York State found polio beginning to circulate in that community. If you haven't looked into the vaccines, please talk to a healthcare provider, get some accurate information. There's talk that there may be an updated COVID vaccine coming out next month, flu season's going to be started, but one thing we absolutely don't need to see start up in this country is polio. So please talk to a qualified healthcare provider. Thanks, staff, for all the presentations this evening, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.